Okay, we are, we have so much, I am starting us right on time. That clock runs late. So I'm opening the Lewis Finance Committee meeting on January 28th at 10 o'clock. We have one critical item that we absolutely need to address, which is all of our comments on the budget, and so that we can move our recommendations forward to City Council. And hopefully we'll get to the others as well. I've had a request from the public that after we do the budget conversation, B point one, that we actually open up for public comments. That might be the primary reason public is interested, but I'll do that to accommodate their needs. Here's how I'd like to run today's meeting. I would like for our city manager to give her entire presentation, and I'm the most guilty person of this, and we do not interrupt her. Let her tell the whole thing, because there's so many pieces. And then what I'm going to ask, so take your own notes, I want to go around the Finance Committee, and I want you to, I want to build the agenda related to our comments. Because everybody's going to have comments, but I want to be very fair to everyone. So what I want you to do is, as you're listening, jot down two to three items that you really want to talk about. I know that there are lots of things everybody wants to talk about, but let's keep ourselves high at the big issues. We all know as money people that when you get into the weeds, you can always address any one weed item. We're looking at the big items to give her the guidance she needs, all right, to be able to formalize the budget. So let's, so jot down, and then we'll just go straight around the room, and also, we will do the same to our two colleagues, virtually. Hi, Mike and Scott. I want to thank Mike for working with Ellen Lorraine on a format that you see now, which is so much more digestible. Mike's going to continue to work, particularly when he returns into the city to work on that. So Mike, thank you for that heroic weekend effort. I am sorry, as a Commander fan, that they lost. However, for you Eagle fans, congratulations, but a lot of us worked over the weekend. Ellen Lorraine particularly worked every single day. So I want to thank you, and I want to thank all of you as finance experts. I think one of the things that's so unusual about this committee, we're so lucky to have citizen participation on any committee, but on this committee, the participation is from individuals who are experts in their field. So I feel comforted, and I know City Council does as well, that we have so many talented financial procurement people, audits, CPAs, that are actually helping us go through this. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ellen Lorraine. She's going to present. There are a lot of changes based on everybody's feedback and the public's feedback through the entire process. And then, again, keep your notes. We'll go around, ask questions, have that dialogue, and then we'll open it up to the public, and then we'll come back in and see if we can reach agreement. Okay, so I'm turning this over to our city manager.
Okay. So we're looking at version two of the draft budgets for fiscal years ending '26, '27, '28, '29, and '30. And I'm on page one. And let's quickly review how page one is set up. As I mentioned the last time we met, you have all of the city funds that the city prepares a budget for. General Fund, Municipal Street Aid, which is MSA, General Capital Projects, 1 and 1/2% Transfer Tax, Combat Violent Crime, we do not budget for, because that is grant money that is received. But there are, there has been activity in our current fiscal year, so that's why it's shown. And then you'll see a new fund called Resiliency Fund. The top part are revenues, the lower part are expenditures. What's important to note, that when we look at all of the funds combined, the adopted budget for '25, excess revenues deficits is zero, which is what we want. You have the actual expenditures and revenues through December 31 of '24, which is nine months into the fiscal year. The next column is how much has been received and expended compared to budget in dollar value? And then the new column, which is in red, is the percentage of actual compared to budget. And because we're nine months into the fiscal year, we should be approximately 75%. So revenues above 75% is a good thing, and expenditures less than 75% is a good thing. It's when we start getting expenditures above 75, we want to look at and see, you know, why are they above? Are they seasonal? Or has there been an expenditure that was not anticipated? So then we're looking at the draft budget for '26. And then the dollar value of change of the draft budget for '26 compared to the adopted budget for '25. And then the percentage increase of the '26 budget compared to '25. And then the remaining four columns are looking at the draft budgets for '27, '28, '29, and '30. And again, if you look at the excess revenues deficit row for '26, '27, '28, '29, and '30, they're all zeros, which is what we want to say, that we have in front of us a balanced budget. Now, when I say a balanced budget, we looked at the revenues and expenditures for '26 and '27. We wanted to make sure that the expenditures have been reduced as low as they can go, but still provide the operational efficiencies that we need for our departments to provide the services. If, we also looked at revenues, and we made adjustments to the revenues accordingly, and we can go through those. When you look at fiscal year '28, '29, and '30, those are still showing as balanced. However, that has been put to prior year reserves to get those to balance. And what that is saying is, as we go through fiscal year '26 and '27, we need to be thinking ahead to '28, '29, and '30, and what expenditures we can make to reduce, and then what additional revenue we can bring in to not have that demand of drawing on prior year reserves, because we do not want to do that. We want to build that up. Are there questions on page one, and how it's, the new format is? Okay. So then if we flip over to page two, we're going to get into the detail for just the general fund only. And each page after page one is laid out the same way. You're going to see '25, actual dollar compare percentage, and then '27, '28. Page two is a summary of just all of the general fund departments. And as you can see, there are many different departments, which is why we did a summary sheet. At the bottom of page two, you're going to see the cash accounts, which there is no tie-in. These funds can be used to meet the needs of the city's operations. They are not obligated and are not earmarked for any specific purposes. You also will see the investment values at the bottom of that page, and it's in the balance of December 31. So this is saying, at the end of December 31, 2024, these are what the balances were in those cash accounts and investments. So at the end of December, we had cash and investments of 8.5 million in the general fund only. So, as we go through the '26 budget, there were a number of adjustments that were made. So let's flip over to page three. It was suggested that the adjustments that were made, we identified those in yellow, and we put a note below it to say, you know, what the adjustment was. So for the first one, we're looking at the tax levy for the current year. So for the adopted '25 budget, 2.9 was budgeted. At the end of December, we brought in almost 3 million, 2.976, which means we are over budget 76,000, or 102.6%. Proposed for '26 is a 5% tax increase. 5%, it was originally 20%, but we are recommending 5% increase. So of the 5% increase, 2% or 40% would be funding a resiliency fund. And that is newly created for FY '26. And I can get into more of the funding part of that as we go through this budget. But 2% of the 5% is being allocated to the resiliency fund. We go to the next line, the gross receipts rental tax. We're not proposing an increase for FY '26. We just wanted to note that you see a large number when you look at what has been received through December versus what has been budgeted for FY '25. And it's important to note that this tax is not due until February 1 following the calendar year. So we will see that revenue line go up as we finish out FY '25. If you take that same line and you go across to '27, FY '27, you will see that that number does increase, and that is to account for the lodging tax, which is account 10410, 0300, that is being proposed to be implemented in fiscal year '27, because that's when the city will see the funding from it. It will actually be proposed to start calendar year 2026. But because the city doesn't receive required payment until February following, that's why we're including it in FY '27. And then that stays consistent for the remaining years. We increased for dockage fees. The recommendation was to go from $3 to $6 per linear foot, so doubling. We did make that adjustment under 10414. And then if we go down to building permits, 10422. We currently charge 1 and 1/2% of construction costs. The recommendation is to make that 3% or doubling it. You will see, we significantly increased the FY '26 budget compared to FY '25, and that is looking at where we were at December '24. So we had collected 1.3 December of '24. If we were to have been charging 3% instead of the 1 and 1/2%, we would have been at 2.6 for nine months of the year. So putting the FY '26 budget at 2.7 seemed reasonable. We still will be having quite a bit of building going on in FY '27, so you'll see that it bumped up for '27 and '28. And then we saw a decline for '29 and '30, as we had initially anticipated 500 homes coming online. So in '29 and '30, we see that number going down, because the bulk will have already been built, been constructed. And so we'll just be issuing permits for renovations. The next line is looking at parking violations. And I'm going to take parking violations and parking meter collection together. You will see parking meter collection is being proposed to be increased in FY '27 by 10%. And then adjusting parking violations in FY '28 by 10%. Are there any questions on that page? Okay, so we're on page four. The change here was at the bottom of the page. And this is where the city bills out for police officers who provide coverage for foot races or other events. And so we wanted this line to equal what's being budgeted in their department expenditure line, because we should certainly be covering our cost when it comes to providing that Page five, for reservations. This is your bonfires, park events. It's being recommended that these fees double, which is why you're seeing an increase from 32.5 to 65. And that will be consistent throughout the remaining years. If we go to the BPW and LOA franchise, this is account 10496. This is, the city receives 5% of the adjusted gross revenues, so we're anticipating that the BPW rates will be adjusted, so by 5%, which is why we're adjusting at 5% in '26 and then subsequent years. And then I'll draw your eye to 10499. This is prior year reserves. You'll see for FY '26, there's a zero, meaning we will not be drawing on prior year reserves in this proposed budget for '26. For '27, we will need to draw on the prior year reserves of 415,000. And then, as I mentioned before, '28, '29, and '30, you see significant draws on prior year reserves. But that is to balance the budget. That does not mean we will be drawing on those. We will need to reevaluate revenue streams and expenditures. But to get us to a zero, those were plugged into that line. And then the remaining two lines in yellow, you're going to see a transfer of funds from the 1 and 1/2% Transfer Tax Fund, and this is to complete the projects identified in the General Operating Fund and then the Marina. And then you're going to see a transfer to Resiliency Fund. This is a transfer out of 416,800. And this is to provide the annual funding for the Resiliency Fund, which we will discuss And as the gross rental receipts tax increases in subsequent years, '27, '28, '30, you're going to see that transfer to the Resiliency Fund increase for the additional revenue that we will be remitting. Okay, are there any questions on the revenues for the general fund?
I did have a question. When you look at, it says draft FYI '26 budget at the bottom is 11,159,600. Is that, that's what we would have as revenue going into next year?
That's what we're budgeting revenues to be in FY '26.
If all the revenue sources are approved.
Came in as projected, yes.
Okay.
Do you want to amend, Joe? I think what you're saying is that 10,000 number is actually the money we're generating, the cost of running places, going to be the 11,000 number, and that's going to take from the transfer fees plus the money that we're designing. So I think what you're asking is, 10,000 number that's brought down to state, without borrowing from others.
Right. So we'll have the 11, which is the incoming, and then we would have to add to that how much to balance the budget?
No, you would, we're bringing in the 1.2 from the transfer tax, and we're sending out the 416 to the Resiliency Fund. And so our revenues, net of that, would be 11 million.
Okay, all right. Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
And I have a real quick question, or do you want me to wait?
Questions are fine. Sorry, questions are fine for clarification, but we're reserving our comments and positions for after. But if you've got a clarification, absolutely.
Yeah. Ellen Lorraine, on, let's see here, this would be 100.
What page, page one? You're on page five?
Yeah, page five. 10499. On page one, when we talked about '27, '28, '29, '30, you said we're going to, that includes taking it out of reserve funds, that budget. So these are the funds that you were talking about that were applicable to, on the first page, '27, '28, '29, '30.
Yes.
And, and the 563 is a leftover from prior year, but when you get into '27, '28, '29, '30, that's coming out of the reserve funds, meaning reserve general funds or reserve funds that we have invested, the $8 million or so?
No, this is just general fund, unspent money.
Got it, thanks. Thank you.
Ellen Lorraine, could you just clarify how that 1.25 million transfer is calculated? I can't seem to come up with that number.
Okay, so we identified there were 695,000 budgeted in the general fund, General Operating Fund. There were 240,400 budgeted in the Parks and Marina budget, and there was 150,000 budgeted in the police budget.
That are all capital related, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, public safety or capital, yes.
In addition to that, I think there's 165,000 in maintenance for capital, too, to add up to that number.
So if you look on page seven, the items that are below department expenditures, go down below, yeah, right there. So the 165,000 that Mike referenced comprises the $15,000 in the loft space, to construct the loft space, and the 150,000, or half of the cost of a trash truck, for FY '26. Now, we know that there is an efficiency study being done in FY '26. But we also know that the results of that efficiency study won't be known till at least halfway through the year. And because of purchasing demands, there may, it may come out that we need to acquire a new trash truck. And so we wanted to budget for that, and know that half of it could be paid from FY '26, because it would need to be ordered, so the down payment would need to be made, with the balance of that truck being paid in FY '27. So we would not receive it.
Yeah, I would just recommend that the 1.25 that the note below it actually foots to that number, because those two together, and you're not really sure where that came from.
Yeah.
So maybe on that master sheet, you could just put all of the components, the 1.25, so people could follow that.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
That's a good point. I think that happened after Ellen Lorraine and I put the initial note in there.
Yes, yes.
That's a good clarif, that's a good comment. Thank you both.
Yes.
And could I clarify one other thing?
Sure.
So when we talk about 2% of the tax increase being allocated from the general budget to fund resiliency, when you say allocated, is that the same as being funded? Because it looks like it's actually being allocated out of general, but being funded out of, out of the transfer tax.
No, that 2% is part of that 416,800 number.
Okay, so that is actually being funded out of general fund reserves?
That's being funded out of the general fund budgeted revenue.
No, I understand, but in terms of the actual transfer of funds, where is the money coming out of? Is it coming out of general, or is it coming out of transfer tax?
General. General.
General fund reserves.
No, Scott, it's coming out of the general fund, current year funded.
Correct.
And I know it's confusing, but that part is coming out of the general fund.
Okay, so.
But it's not actually a line item in the budget.
Is that a carryover?
Well, it is.
It is a line mark.
It is.
It's a negative, it's, it is a subtraction from the revenue.
But it's below the line, it's not actually in the budget. So I'm just looking at page five, and it looks like the transfer of 416 is not in the actual budget, because theoretically, that would increase the deficit in the general fund budget, right?
Maybe it's a note issue. So the one on page five, the one that says transfer from 1.5 transfer tax, then below, transfer to resiliency, we should say transfer from operating fund, because it's, it's the property tax, should that get approved. It's that part that moves forward. Would that be clearer for people to look at?
Well, I'm thinking it needs to be in red to show that it's outgoing.
Yes, it needs to be in red, it's outgoing.
Because transfer to is different from the transfer from.
Yes, yes, I think that's the way, so that they know, because I think we're moving to understanding what money goes to, but where does it come from? Okay?
Yes, exactly.
And we actually would have a line item in the budget that we would put that number in.
Correct.
In our GL system.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
So real quick, so the Resiliency Fund is coming from two components, 2% of the, of the, of the tax and the, and then.
Can I ask you to hold, because she's going to go through Resiliency Fund. There are like five sources, okay? Hold your question for a second, because it's, we knew, we knew that question was going to come up, and so, and it's a good question, but we actually have a sheet for you.
Okay, sorry.
No, no.
Okay. So we've looked at revenues. So expenditure-wise, we kept the same inflationary factor of 4 and 1/2%, mostly for the FY '26 and '27. For '28, '29, and '30, we reduced that inflationary factor from 4 and 1/2 down to 2%. And again, as we review these budgets each year, we will look to make sure, is that 2% an appropriate increase or not? And we will adjust accordingly. But right now, '28 through '30 are at 2%, '26, '27 are at 4 and 1/2. And as you go through the expenditures, which start on page seven, again, you will see where if there is a change, it's noted why there is a change. So in this particular case, on page seven, the yellow line ending in 5294 was increased by $1,200 to account for coursework that will be taken by the staff in the maintenance department. The next line increased by 12,100 to purchase radios and then facilities equipment. And then if you look at account ending in 5475, construction, 15,000. And then it says, see below, that additional loft space in L-shaped building is what's being budgeted for that $15,000 expenditure. And if you look at account ending in 5485, vehicles, 150,000, and go down below, trash truck, rear load or automated, 150,000, that's half of the annual cost for a trash truck is being budgeted in FY '26 total cost. So above the double line is the line item detail, below the double line is the detail giving more information of what it is. And you can look at that for each of the fiscal years beyond '26. So moving on to the police department, I think this department saw a significant increase of '26 budget compared to '25 budget, and there's a number of reasons why. The biggest being the salary line. So in October of '24, it was approved to amend the salaries for the police department. That was done through an MOU effective October 2024. The proposed FY '26 budget carries that MOU through. And it also adds an additional officer. Currently, there are 17 sworn officers in FY '26. That number is being proposed to go to 18 sworn. It does take a number of significant amount of time to train an uncertified officer through an academy, as well as having them do 12 weeks of field training. We are including additional officers, because in fiscal year '29, four of our current officers will be eligible to retire. And because of the length of time it takes to train an officer, we don't want to be hiring four people in one fiscal year. four people in one fiscal year, if we know ahead of time that we can plan accordingly. So when you adjust the full-time regular salaries, the, all the personnel payroll lines below it that relate to it, payroll taxes, health insurance, those all need to be adjusted as well. And so a lot of those lines are as a result of the full-time salaries line being adjusted. So your full-time overtime, your standby pay, special duty pay, your payroll taxes, your pension, are all because of changing or increasing staff. The next biggest line that we see increase was account ending 5485, vehicles. This is budgeted in FY '26 for $150,000, and this is to provide more stable budgeting, consistent budgeting. In prior years, we've had to purchase five police vehicles at one time because of the need, and then because of the timing of when we could get vehicles after COVID. So to stabilize that, to make it consistent, it was determined that budgeting for two vehicles every year provided that stable budgeting, and we could account for that. And then it also provided an opportunity for the chief to manage the fleet as needed, if he could consistently project that he would be getting two vehicles each year. Are there questions about the police?
Just one question.
Just speak into your microphone so the public can hear that sound.
Sure. One question, a lot of HR expenses associated with this, as far as the benefits go for each one of these hires, is there, are they on the same benefit schedule, or is it different because they're under collective bargaining as the rest of City Hall?
So they are essentially the same benefits, the only little difference is the health insurance, where the city pays 80% of the premium, and the officer pays 20%. I will say the city does receive monies from the state of Delaware for their pension, it's budgeted at $100,000. That revenue is not reflected in their budget, it's reflected in grants, so we need to keep that in mind. And they also receive funding from Sussex County that could be used to reduce their departmental expenditures.
So, do you know the number or percentage of increase that the MOU costs total?
I think the salaries increased 19%.
19%. Do you have a dollar figure for that?
I cannot recall offhand, but I know, I'd have to look it up.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep going.
One more question.
Oh, sorry.
Is it my understanding that the contract is up this year for the police?
It does, and March 31 of '25, yes.
Okay, is that a three-year contract typically?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is there any increase budgeted in here for that?
We kept the inflationary factor the same in this department. Right, '26 and '27, it's 4.5.
4.5, okay, thank you.
Is this the time for any discussion?
No.
No.
We have a lot more to go through, but we will, I promise you.
Okay. Moving on to page nine. Parking enforcement is on the top part, it doesn't have any yellow lines. We're looking at beach patrol next, that does have a few lines. And this one increased by $46,000, because four additional guards are being proposed. There's two guards that are on each stand, so there's two stands, two additional stands. It is also being proposed to add one more hour of coverage every day, so instead of guarding from 10 to 4, guards will be on the stands from 10 to 5. And to provide coverage on the weekends, Saturdays and Sundays, in September only. So that's why that's increased significantly. And again, because payroll salaries increased, so does payroll taxes. And then the other request is to purchase a second ATV, being budgeted at $20,000, so that there are a total of two ATVs in this department. And then in '28, it's budgeted to replace one of them. Any questions there? Moving on to city management, the biggest increase is on salaries line, and this is for a number of reasons. First, it's to show the city manager's salary coming from finance, putting it into city management, and also to move the assistant city management's salary previously shown in Parks and, yeah, Parks and Marina, to city management. And again, adjusting those other payroll lines accordingly, adding in for health insurance for each staff, life insurance, and then pension. The next big increase...
Is there a concurrent, then, reduction in those...
There is reduction, it's not dollar for dollar, and I can explain why as we go through it. So under consulting, that was the next biggest line increase, $23,000. If you look down below, that is the reason why, it's for a U of D fellow. We've typically had great success with having a fellow come from the University of Delaware to help us during the summer season, usually it's 10 weeks, providing training for staff, $5,000, and then year one of a two-year project to start our strategic plan for the city. Are any questions? So then if you're looking at finance, it is to remove the city manager previously in finance out of this department, and putting them into city management. Like I said, this is not dollar for dollar, because when the '25 budget was adopted, the city manager's salary was not determined at that time. Questions about finance?
I'm still not clear here. In this budget, are we having a replacement for your old position, or not? And what are we doing relatively to the internal treasurer that we've recommended?
So there are ways we can get the tasks that have been identified for the internal treasurer done in FY '26, and in FY '27, we are asking for a second assistant city manager. That would be strong finance that would oversee, but we can accommodate.
So, but, we had a, before any of this discussion on the internal treasurer, we had a city manager and we had a finance officer. Are we replacing the finance officer now that you're town manager?
Not in FY '26.
So let's, that's a discussion item that we want to go through.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to human resources, this is page 12. This is proposing a second staff person in human resources. Currently, there is one that manages all city staff through their onboarding, their benefits, their payroll processing, and then those that leave. And so this would add a second person to assist with those tasks. And then under consulting, this is where we have mentioned before about proposing having an engineering consultant, a public relations communications consultant, and a grants manager consultant. Now, we've put in dollar values for each of those. We may need to look at reducing those values, reducing the scope of consulting services that each of these may provide, or just looking at a one or two consulting services. So this is a discussion point that we can have as well, to bring that number down, if that's determined.
Are these subject to competitive bidding as professional services?
So we do not have to do bidding for professional services per charter, but I think it's identifying the scope of what each of these consultants will do for the city, and then getting the best price. Parks and Marina is on page 13. So this is to move the assistant city manager out of this department, but you will see that instead of it going down by equivalent amount, we are looking to add a staff person in this area. This department oversees Parks and Recreation Commission, oversees the beach patrol, it oversees all of the activity in our parks, it does the bonfires and issues those. So this is a very busy department, and with moving the assistant city manager out, that means one person is doing all of that. And so the proposal is to add a second staff person, full-time.
Would Julia, doesn't Julia cover some of this?
She would be the remaining one in there if a second staff person is not hired.
Okay.
Questions on Parks and Marina? Building official, I didn't see any big adjustments or big changes in this to bring your attention to, but if there's questions, certainly let me know. Same way with planning and community development. So that brings us to Parks and Recreation Commission, this is on page 16. This incorporates, the top line incorporates a discussion from our last finance committee meeting, which would be to adjust the Lewis and Bloom donation from $25,000 to $33,000. And then this also incorporates, which is leading to the increase of the '26 budget compared to '25 for parks and beaches, $35,000 of that $64,000 increase is for implementing the plan at Great Marsh Park. This is the 66 acres that the city leases from Denrec, that needed to have an approved plan done after 20 years, and I think we're in year 19.
Yes, it expires, I'm sorry. The lease expires in 2026.
This line also adds a budget for the Fourth Street Preserve, which will be, is scheduled to be acquired in FY '26, and so we wanted to set up a budget for that. We won't probably be getting that till at least September of '25, so halfway through Your questions about that?
I assume the 300% increase budget change for the Arbor Day activities is just buying
So in the past, we've been able to get a tree donated and planted. This past year, we weren't able to do that, so we wanted to have additional funds in there in the event that we can't get a donation.
Can we go back one page? I might have missed something on 14. I think we got a 180% increase on one of the line items on page 14 towards the bottom, technical equipment going up 180%. Do we know what that's...
So they want to go to online reviewing of plans, and so in order to do that, we need to get larger monitors for them to do it, and this is acquiring those.
What's monitors?
Hardware, yes.
Does that also include buying the online equipment to do that, or programming to do that, or do we already own that?
I think that also includes a license to have that program do it.
So where is the Fourth Street Forest?
The purchase of it?
Yeah.
It's in transfer tax.
Yeah, up on the top as an deduction.
It is up on the bottom as an expenditure, because it isn't allowable.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The full million is in there.
What's the line item? Roughly?
The line item to acquire, the Fourth Street's a million.
Yeah, no, I know that, what's the line item in here? Where is it shown as an expenditure?
Page 27.
Okay, got it, we haven't gotten there yet.
Correct.
Got it.
Okay, moving on to page 17. Top part is mayor and city council expenditures. So this again reflects what the discussion was at our last finance committee meeting of adding $21,000 to 70 to the city's donation to the fire department. City originally gives $75,000, it's budgeted in '25. '26, we're adding $21,000 to it to make it $96,000. I also want to draw your eye to account ending in 5205, this is the donation for the Greenways. This $3,000 donation, as you will see, shows a zero if we're adopted FY '25 budget, and that is because it was a separate department. This budget for '26 closes out that department and brings it over into the municipal, to mayor and city council as a donation, because it truly is a donation to the Greenways. So that's why it's new. If we look at planning commission, in FY '26, the planning commission will be starting the rewrite of the comprehensive plan, that will occur over three fiscal years. Starting it in '26, the bulk of the expenses will be in FY '27, and then in FY '28, we should be wrapping up, because it needs to be approved by October of '27, and submitted to the state. Looking at bike and pedestrian, the, there's not a significant change for FY '26, but for FY '27, you will see $25,000 additional budgeted for the implementation of projects related to the Bike Master Plan that was done this past fiscal year. And for H Park, below, $30,000 is being maintained for FY '26, but in future years, '27, that number goes down to the $15,000. And I believe they were working with the National Historic Registry and then creating a searchable feature for their historic homes throughout the city.
Ellen Marine, on the master plan consultant, it's reflecting multi-year increase, which is pretty substantial. Is there like a total budget for that, or are those just estimates?
So we put in estimates, I believe we budgeted $165 over three years for this, because this is a big project. We tried to allocate it as best we could, recognizing that fiscal year '27 would be the bulk.
And just to understand the responsibility, is that a decision that was made by council, or is this something that the finance committee is supposed to opine on, just as far as that budget allocation?
So rewriting the comp plan is, it's required by the state, and submitting it by the deadline is required by the state. The dollar amount to be spent on a consultant to help do that, that could be a discussion of the finance committee.
That's not something if we hired, that's not something if we hired a second assistant city manager who does finance, that that person could help out, and we actually have to go outside of City Hall, is that what you're saying?
Yes, to do a comp plan rewrite, yes, it is a firm that we would need to seek services Page 18. Okay, page eighteen. The one thing to note here is under mitigation. So you will see in FY twenty-six, sixty thousand is being budgeted for mitigation. This includes the reentry plan that needs to be, needs to be written. And it also includes the West Cedar match of thirty-four thousand and the design work that will get paid out along with the city's management of Frag Mities, which has typically been spraying and burning. Burning is a covered expense by the state. Spraying is paid for by the city. And so in out years, twenty-seven through thirty, we are budgeting for spraying of the Frag Mities. But we will be working with the state forester to develop a plan on how to manage our Frag Mities in the city. Page nineteen. The biggest expenses here are down below. The city dock electrical repairs, parts one and two, and then replacing the floating dock at Canalfront Park. So combined, those projects cost two-hundred-and-forty thousand. They're being budgeted in this department. But this is part of the funding, the transfer tax money coming from transfer tax to the General Fund. This is part of what it will cover.
A question about this. So, this is not considered under Parks and Marina, right? It's a separate category.
This is city dock and Canalfront Park.
Okay. Do we bring in enough revenue from our Marina fees to cover these expenses?
I think with the recommendation to double the docking fees, we're going to be closer to covering it. What throws it off is the dredging that's required every two years. That's hard to budget for. And then the insurance lines, which are not reflected in this department. They're reflected in operating. Okay, and the next page is the Board of Adjustment. There is no big increases in this area either. So then that brings us to page twenty-one and twenty-two. Twenty-one is the operating expenses. This is where we usually have tipping fees reflected. Insurance lines are reflected here. Utility costs are reflected in here. And so when we go to that yellow line ending in fifty-two forty-four, we see an increase of a hundred thousand. Majority of that is the cleaning contract that expires. Now, when I say cleaning, this is to clean all of the city's public restrooms, city buildings. That was put out to bid. And city staff are evaluating the results of the bids that were received. And will be making a recommendation on that. But we did include some additional cost here. The other costs covered in this particular line item can be found on page twenty-two, the detail.
You broke this down?
Uh-huh. Page, page twenty-two.
We'll see how.
That's what I'm interested in.
So if you look at the lines that end in fifty-two forty-four, there should be three of those. The Second Street Brick Sidewalk Repairs that are being budgeted. A portion of this is going to be paid from the ARPA funding. So this is the balance. Adding dehumidifiers to the HVAC units at City Hall, thirty-one thousand. And then replacing the carpet in the BPW area of City Hall at thirty-two thousand. These three items are part of the four-hundred-sixty-five thousand number budgeted.
I thought I had heard you mention tipping fees under.
Uh-huh, so that's under line one-hundred-five ninety, fifty-two zero six. Should be the top one.
Oh, zero six, okay. And is there a reason that's not in with traffic?
There's no reason. It's just been in this, this area's operating, just like insurance.
Okay.
For the vehicles. Okay, so if we look at the next line ending in fifty-four seventy-five, this is on page twenty-one. This is capital outlay construction, three hundred thousand. Okay, then we need to also refer to page twenty-two. And again, look at lines ending in five-four seven-five, which is the Savannah Beach Guard Shack renovations. This is to renovate the second floor of that area. So currently, the parking enforcement and the Beach Patrol occupy this building. It is a tight space. The second floor has not been renovated. So it is rafters and unoccupable. This budget would finish off that space so that the Beach Patrol would occupy the second floor and parking would do the first floor. The only area on the first floor is a kitchen and then the office area for the parking enforcement. There is no area for Beach Patrol to have their daily meetings and ahead of their shifts when they begin.
So does the parking enforcement also have a separate space? Or this is the only place where parking enforcement is?
This is the only place where parking enforcement is.
Do they use it all year round?
They use it from May through October, October fourteenth.
And then they don't need?
Then we don't have parking meters, no. And then the second part of that line is the repairs, renovations needed for Fisher Martin House. Now, we have acquired a grant for this. So this number could go down. Additional funds are needed in addition to the grant money we've already received, which is why we're budgeting it here. But if we're successful in getting grant money in the future, then, like I said, this will go down. If we look at, let's go up on page twenty-two, up a couple lines where it says, "Long-term capital reserve study." Twenty-five thousand has been budgeted for that. This is a analysis that GMB consultants can provide to evaluate all of the city buildings, to identify, you know, what is the condition of the roof? What is the condition of the HVAC units? Are the buildings ADA accessible? They will evaluate that. And that's what that study is for. So that's what it references and that's what it means.
Lorraine, that also includes the inventory. So, because there's been a lot of interest on, that we need an inventory of all of our facilities. So it's inventory, but it's also an assessment.
Yes.
So for future budgets.
Correct, we can plan.
And I know.
Yep, thank you.
That BPW is separate. But if we're looking at a new City Hall in the future, I think it's important for us to have an inventory of their buildings as well so that as we make decisions, we know what's open.
Let's hold that for a comment. It's an interesting comment. Okay.
So, might be a comment, might be part of this budget. You can tell me if I need to hold it.
I'm good about keeping, you guys are doing a great job. And I know it's really hard.
I'm just wondering or throwing out there, with this GBM additional consultancy fee, would that be something that if we do hire the internal engineer, that could be a project that could have worked?
That's going to be a comment about the use of that outside. Yeah, very good. And I, we'll go through that. Add that to your list that you want to have raised.
Are there questions about the operating pages twenty-one and twenty-two?
I'll ask it. And again, it might be for discussion. But I see there's a proposal to get a generator, I assume, for City Hall, which I assume is emergency backup. Maybe a discussion later on of where the Resiliency Fund fits in with these emergency purchases.
Absolutely. And there've been several, we've already heard that we have in that conversation. Yep. Yep.
Okay. So the last page, twenty-three, are grant expenditures. This is where we budget, we're getting grant revenue in. We budget the expenditure on this side as well. The biggest being the playground, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. This would be for Canalfront Park. The city was successful in getting grant funding for that to reduce the cost. And this is just showing the expenditure of that in FY twenty-six. As we know, there's been a delay in the installation of that. So we are hopeful that it will be paid out at the start of FY twenty-six. Are there any other questions on that? So this wraps up the General Fund. And again, the excess revenues deficit for FY twenty-six is zero, which proves that it's a balanced budget for twenty-six, as well as twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Okay, so the next page, twenty-four, and pages thereafter, these are more smaller funds. This one is called Municipal Street Aid. This is state funding that's received by the city. It's based on population, year-round population, and the number of miles of roadway the city maintains. So it does fluctuate. Six million dollars is allocated among all the jurisdictions in the whole state using those two criteria. So for FY twenty-five, one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand was received, was budgeted. We receive that funding in two different tranches. The next tranche was received in January of twenty-five, which is why it's not reflected here at the end of December. I don't anticipate that revenue changing dramatically, which is why I maintained it at one-hundred-and-fourteen. The expenditure of that money goes towards paying the utility costs for their streetlights, about thirty-six thousand. And then the balance is being budgeted to fix potholes, sidewalk repairs throughout the city as they develop. The balance in that checking account for Municipal Street Aid at the end of December was two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. Are there questions on that?
Ellen Lorraine, do you know how many full-time residents we have here?
We do three-thousand-three hundred. I know each year, we have to fill out an affidavit to the state. And we check it on the census. And we submit that to the state.
And that matches the NSA, the state allocation. Because I checked over the weekend. Okay, thank you.
Okay, page twenty-five. These are all police grants. We do not budget for these grants. But there is activity occasionally in these areas. Sally is for state aid to local law enforcement. And Edie is emergency illegal drug enforcement. So that's why you see some activity under Edie. But as I said, we do not budget for them. So moving on to page twenty-six. This is the General Capital Projects Fund. This has been historically where lease payments on city trash trucks are paid from, as well as the city vehicle fleet leasing program. So for FY twenty-six, we have two trash trucks we're still making lease payments on. And one will be, one of those two will be done in twenty-six. So starting in fiscal year twenty-seven, we'll be down to one lease payment for a trash vehicle.
I have a question about that. So the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand to reserve a truck, is that, would those be leases? Does that money go toward paying the leases?
The city, the one-hundred-and-fifty thousand put in the general fund is to outright buy it.
Oh, okay.
We could explore leasing.
Oh, okay.
As an option that would reduce it.
My other question, I noticed these vehicles, are the police cars included in this?
No, police cars have already been purchased.
Oh, they're purchased outright? Okay.
There is a transfer from the General Fund to this fund of a hundred thousand dollars. And that's reflected on line four-hundred four-eighty-seven zero 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 zero. This fund does not have a stable revenue source. And so that's why the hundred thousand is to represent repayment of those lease payments. You will see line four-hundred four-eighty oh two hundred. Franchise fee natural gas is zeroed out. And that's to provide funding for the Resiliency Fund, which we will discuss. This fund is also having to pull from reserves of seventeen thousand five eighty. And that's found on line four-hundred four-ninety-nine. Prior year reserve, seventeen thousand five eighty is needed for FY twenty-six, but will not be needed for out years. And then if you look below, you'll see again, a listing of cash accounts and investment balances. And the one highlighted is the balance of the monies the city's received so far from Chesapeake Utilities and the franchise fees. Three-hundred-three thousand, almost three-hundred-four thousand. And it's being proposed that this bank account be the seed funding for the resiliency. So that's why it's highlighted. It's going to be moved to the Resiliency Fund. Are there questions about this fund? Okay, so we can talk about the one and one-half percent transfer tax fund. This is where all of the transfer tax money the city receives when properties are sold. This money goes into this fund. So for twenty-six, we are budgeting three million dollars of receiving transfer tax money. And that's because at the end of December twenty-four, we were at two-point-eight-six received so far. And we still had three months to go. And so we're budgeting at three. And then in twenty-seven and out years, we are reducing that to two-point-eight-five. Thank you to Mary Lou and Tina for estimating what we could see as a city interest, utilizing our higher yields that we were able to obtain. And so that number of one-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand is being budgeted for line four-sixty four-fifty-two oh three hundred. And then it was also proposed that the transfer tax fund provide seed money to the Resiliency Fund of seven-hundred-fifty thousand, which is what is shown on line four-sixty four-ninety-nine zero 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 zero. I'll come back to the prior year reserves line in a second. If we look at expenditures, this is where we heard the public that we needed to maintain our infrastructure. And so GMB, through the efforts of Charlie and Andrew, developed our CIP. What is in that CIP has been put on, put into this fund. We've also set it up so that the design for street renovation projects are done the year prior to the construction being planned. So for example, if we look at, let's look at fiscal year twenty-seven. And we see that street renovation phase twenty-seven is being budgeted for fiscal year twenty-seven. The budget amount's seventy-three thousand nine sixty-five. But if, and that's in the green. If we go down to the orange section. If we go down to the orange section, we'll see another street renovation phase '27 design being budgeted in FY '26. So that's saying that in FY '26, the design for the projects, for the roads identified in phase '27, those will be designed in '26 so that come fiscal year '27, we're ready for construction. And that's been consistently done going forward. So we've also included street work on Ocean View Boulevard, phase '26, that we've been saying will be completed from March to, be done before Janu, I'm sorry, be done before June. So that's being budgeted at full cost. We've also included Monroe and Railroad into this as road projects, being fully funded out of the transfer tax, and repayment of state revolving fund monies for the Hornkill Avenue project, as well as the West Fourth Street project, which we were able to utilize the BPW state funding for. But this reflects the repayment of that debt.
So just to clarify, I know there was a lot of discussion by the consultants, GMB, that we were going to get our roads up to a percentage that was acceptable. But a lot of the stuff you're talking about are actually joint projects with BPW that involve utilities work, and then the city paying for the road replacement. They're a little different than what we had originally talked about with GMB as far as those other capital improvements, right?
Not really, because I think they had identified Monroe Avenue and Railroad as needing to be done. We're doing that in here. They've identified Manila, that's being budgeted in here, and Alaska.
Yeah, and I think the same thing's happened with the Fourth Street project.
Mm-hmm.
And just, in my mind, and probably that's where the confusion came, GMB talked about how we needed to have our roads up to a 60% standard would be ideal. These, all of these projects that are on here now are really outside of that, because those roads are going to be torn up. Working with BPW to do some sort of utility work, which is why we're working with BPW, and then the city just pays to get them back into the condition they were before. So this, am I wrong that this really isn't the big capital projects, or did they just fold that all in together?
This is, this is the full CIP that they presented to the financial stewardship. We asked them to highlight those items where there had to be coordination, because there have been issues in the past. So that's why you see them in different books, different color schemes. But you are seeing the CIP we saw allocated in the budget, just to clarify.
The street improvement, street renovation phase projects are identifying those streets that need to be brought up.
Right. Just as you're saying, Carrie, to that level that Charlie presented to us.
The tan ones are the greater than 40% roads that just need to be ruined down, and the green ones are the BPW coordination on utilities. Is that what?
No, I would not say that. I would say the design work for all the street projects is in the tan. The construction of all the street projects, to include those that need to be brought up to CIP standards, and those that are being jointly done with the board are in the green.
So they're combined in the green?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, sorry for my, the last, a couple of rounds ago, we had them separate them so we could see BPW coordination separately. I apologize for that.
These colors don't agree with the colors.
These colors don't agree with the color scheme we had before. We've changed our palette.
So I have a question. At the bottom of the colored sheet, there's a cost to purchase an uplift to police vehicles.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 27 of 30. That money, those monies are moved, being moved over to the police budget?
There's none budgeted for FY '26. There's no money budgeted for that. It was for FY '25.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I see, okay.
Also in here, under account 465905481, is real property, $1 million. So this includes the 750 pledge already, and the 250 ask from the Open Space Alliance for the West Fourth Street property. Okay, so we're looking at the yellow, that's the 750, $750,000. That's the one-time seed money from transfer tax to the resiliency fund. And then the line below that is another line item to provide annual funding to the resiliency, and that is 10% of the transfer tax collected. So that's why it's sitting at $300,000, because $3 million is the budgeted amount for transfer At the very bottom of this page are, again, the bank accounts and investments. So at the end of December, there was 7.85 million in all of the transfer tax accounts, cash accounts combined.
Can I just make a comment? I think it would be helpful, given the projected stress on the transfer tax fund, that we project out those balances so that we see what's happening to them under these proposed scenarios in the out years. Because that's, that's a trailing number, and what we really care about is what's happening to the balances going forward.
Okay.
So are you suggesting that if we outpace the incoming funds over the next, let's say, three years, we could start needing to dip into other reserves unless we raised revenue?
Or deleted expenditures. He's just, I think what Scott's saying is, let's, let's show the forecast here so we always keep our eye on that, so we don't take more than we have, basically.
And is it pretty steady? Is that transfer tax fund, has it been fairly steady over the year?
Recently, it significantly increased.
Oh, good.
But will it stay that level? That's the question.
I think that's a concern for discussion.
Right.
I'd also have a question on the maintenance streets for last year, the $860,000 budgeted that hasn't been spent yet. Will, will that be spent before the end of the fiscal year?
No, that will not be spent. No.
So that's a significant savings that will go into the reserves?
Correct.
Theory.
So at the end of December, we had a million surplus.
Yeah, okay, that's, I see that. So if that stays true, when we pull out the 750 for the seed money, we're actually still going to be building the reserves?
Okay, are there questions about the transfer tax? Okay. So page 28 are two funds that we don't budget, and it's for obvious reasons. They're not very active, and the Fisher Martin House actually has been closed. Go to page 29. These are two additional police department funds. The PD K-9 is when funds were raised to support a K-9 unit. We do not have a K-9 unit in our police department now. The fund below it, CBC, is combat violent crime. We do receive grant funding from the state for this. It's not a budgeted fund that we can readily identify how much we're going to get and how it's going to be spent. We did receive funding in FY '25, $34,000, but we don't budget for it going out years. So then that brings us to page 30. And this is a new page, because this is the resiliency fund. So let's walk through how this new fund will be funded. And I attached a hybrid scenario spreadsheet to the agenda, and each of you should have it.
It's a little easier for committee members to look at this sheet.
Mm-hmm.
It was attached to your agenda. It's right after the memo. So it's, I mean, you can look at the long spreadsheet, but I find this one clearer in terms of understanding how we're proposing to fund it.
Okay, so this fund will be, it provides funding from full-time residents, and it also incorporates funding from our visiting population. It provides seed money from two different funds. So we'll walk through what it includes. So under fiscal year '26, year one, this would be the column, second column from the left, Lou. So this includes the $20,000 in franchise fees that the city receives from Chesapeake Utilities. Currently, this franchise fee is deposited in our General Capital Projects Fund. So if you recall, I zeroed that out for FY '26, but I have put it in the resiliency fund, found on page 30 of your budget. The second is to allocate 2% of the proposed 5% tax increase. So this means 5% property tax increase is 3 cents. So taking 40% of that 3 cent increase and moving it to the resiliency fund. So every 1 cent increase is approximately $52,000. So $156,000 is the projected additional property tax revenue. So taking 40% of that is $62,400. That will go into the resiliency fund. That comes from general fund. The third component is 2% of the 5% gross rental receipts tax collected. And again, it's starting in FY '27, this will include potentially the lodging tax, which is at 2%. So if we look at the gross revenues of what the GRT was collected in FY '24, so the city collected $754,000 in GRT in '24, and we take 2% of that 5%, that puts us at $334,000 of revenue being transferred from the general fund to the resiliency fund each year. Another component is 2% of the parking meter collection. So in FY '25, $1,048,000 was collected, so taking 2% of that, or $20,400, would be 10% of the transfer tax, $300,000, would go into this fund. So if you look at the annual contributions, they total $736,800. We also said that seed money would come from the Chesapeake Utilities bank account of previously collected franchise, which is roughly $300,000, and $750,000 would be the seed from the transfer tax. So when you take the annual contributions and you add in the seed, there would be a year-one balance budget of 1.786 in this new fund. And $416,800, $416,800 would come from the general fund. $20,000 is being moved from the General Capital Projects Fund, and $300,000 is coming from the transfer tax.
So when you did your projections, did you hold constant at 10% in the transfer tax? Or do you think that?
I'm here.
You had to say it in your microphone.
When, when you carried forward to future years, did you carry those percentages, or are you going to adjust those every year?
Transfer tax contribution went down because our budget for transfer tax revenue went down. So it went from $300,000 in '26 to 285 in '27 through '30.
Percentage would stay consistent, but the source, we are anticipating, could go down. So we've had an increase in transfer tax, dramatic increase, okay, but, but will that bubble last? We don't know. So to be conservative, we start bringing it down. But the contribution it pays to the resiliency fund would stay constant in our plan.
So, so we would be fixing that 10%, regardless of how much comes in, whether it goes up or down?
That's in the plan, that's how it is.
Okay, and then the same with the parking meter collections? That would be fixed at 2%?
Yes.
Over five years?
Now, you will see that we budgeted for an increase in the parking meter rates in FY '27.
Yes.
Which is why that revenue line went up to 22,440 from $20,400.
Okay.
Ellen Lorraine, can you please clarify the amount for the gross receipts tax, the That amount is actually 40% of the collections. Is that the intent?
Yes.
Taking 2% of that?
Because 2% of the 5%.
Okay, all right, now I understand. The rate is 5%.
Correct.
We're going to take 40% of that, which is 2%.
Yes.
Okay.
So as I said, in year one, the total contributions are 1.786 to include seed money and annual. If we look at years two, fiscal year '27 through '30, we won't have the seed money, but we still will have the annual contributions, and they are $793,840 each year. So if that all holds true, the end of year five, or fiscal year '30, this fund will have almost $5 million. And so if we look at page 30 of your budget, you're going to see the $20,000 in franchise fees budgeted. You will see the $750,000 from the transfer tax, the one time. The $300,000 annual contribution from the transfer tax, this is 10% of the budgeted transfer tax revenue. And you will see the $416,800, which is the annual contribution from the general fund, comprised of what we just went over, to get us to 1.466. And then at the bottom, you will see where we moved the Chesapeake bank account to this fund, approximately $300,000.
Can I ask a question about whether there is a stated constitution of sorts that governs the use of these funds? Obviously, you know, transfer tax has a statutory restriction for capital. We know what the general fund is used for. What are, is there anything written that governs the use of these funds? Because at a certain level, we're moving just money from one bucket to another, right? And I, I'd like some clarification on that.
So this is considered, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, these would be public safety monies, that, these monies could be spent on public safety items. The parameters of this program are yet to be written, but I think there will be a policy on how these are to be expended.
For resiliency, you mean?
Correct.
Yes, yes, I'm working directly on that with our deputy mayor, NGB, Guard Rills.
Was there a goal of $5 million over five years? Is that what this projection is trying to fulfill?
We can, let's, let's wait, and let's, I'll, I'll go through that with you in conversations, where that has come from. Okay, do you have, are you good, or do you want to do your email summary?
I think we've addressed, we've addressed the resiliency fund budget, how it was funded. We've discussed that the budget reflects a commitment to do road projects and how we have budgeted for design and construction. We've talked about the inflationary factor is maintained at 4.5 for '26 and missed to '27, but reduced to 2%. We talked about how the general fund reserves are not being used for '26, but they are being used in the transfer tax to fund general fund costs, and that in out years, we need to look at the draw on prior-year reserves, because in '27, '28, '29, and '30, it was put into providing balanced budget. because in '27, '28, '29, and '30, it was put into providing balanced budget. And how we have reviewed the expenditures for each of the departments that submitted their budget and shared their budgets with this stewardship subcommittee, there have been a number of reviews done to either push out the expenses or to push expenses over multiple years or to reduce our request. You know, if the department manager requested for two staff, maybe we reduce that to one over multiple years instead of doing both two staff in one year. So we did review for efficiencies. And then the tax increase of 5%. So I believe we've reviewed those items. We talked about the $1 million pledge. I will draw your attention. The library donation was increased from $5,000 to $10,000 for fiscal year '26 only. This process was done just like what was done for Lewis and Bloom and the fire department. It's for a single year. The library will join the fire department and Lewis and Bloom in the fall to make their presentation to this committee going forward on need.
I have a question. Do you know how many full-time employees the city has?
So right now, we're at 45 full-time. And we hire approximately 20 to 30 seasonal.
Ellen, thank you for phenomenal hard work to get us to this place. I'd like to just do a check on committee members' time. Does everyone have flexibility to hang in with us until 1 o'clock?
I do not.
You do not? What time is... What's your hard stop?
I've got another call at 1 o'clock, so 20 of one.
20 of one?
Yeah.
Everybody else? You're good? Focus online?
Yeah, I have a hard stop at 10:30 my time, so 12:30 your time.
Okay. So if we could go a full other hour. All right. What I'd like to say to the public is we're going to go a little bit out of order. And so if you do have comments, I'm going to let you come forward to meet your schedule, but you're also welcome to stay. And I will do a public comment period with the majority that can stay. However, one thing I would say to the public is we are not interacting... It always surprises me in Lewis. I run a lot of committee meetings in different government settings. And public comment, we value, and we listen, and we bring it into our deliberations, but it is not an engagement. So please do not be offended if what I say is, "Thank you for your comment." I'm not blowing off, excuse me, your comment. I'm actually following a procedure so we can deliberate. But I'm going to go out to the public because I know many of the public also have a time deadline. So if you come forward, say your name and your address, and then please share whatever you would like to share. We'll start with those who are here, and then I'll see if anybody online would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm Rob Morgan, 415 East Cape Shore's Drive in Lewis. I was surprised to read in the Gazette that the city is planning to raise taxes, and I've got three comments on that. First, the city's revenues have been growing organically with the build-out of Lewis Quarterfront Preserve, Old Town, and other places. And it's unclear to me, and may be unclear to others, why the city's expenses are growing disproportionately to the natural increase of revenue. Second, next year, the county's taxes on Lewis residents are going to soar, even if the county's budget remains static. And that's because the assessments are rising far more on coastal communities than on inland communities. And it will be tough for the citizens of Lewis to get that double whammy. Third, on the cost side, I see in the budget that the police department revenue expenses for the draft of 2026 budget are over a quarter of the whole budget. And I don't think that the police department expenses are fully encapsulated in that line based on discussions I remember having with Ellen Lorraine years ago. Things like insurance, space, utilities don't get fully captured. But it's more than a quarter already. As I read the draft, in four years, that proportion will rise closer to a third of the whole budget. And I'm not sure we're predicting a crime wave. The police department expenses seem disproportionate to our real needs. One way to approach police department costs is through collective bargaining. That's an important way of trying to control police costs. And I understand that's coming up soon. But another way is through the budget. And for the committee to recommend and the council to adopt a budget that gives the police department a certain amount that the city can afford, ask the police chief to propose how he or she would allocate that money among the department's needs. And then consider that proposal would be what many communities do. And it would both call on the expertise of the police chief and be responsible for control of the budget. We were advised some years ago by special counsel in our police department negotiations that the budget is not subject to collective bargaining and is not subject to arbitration. So those are my three thoughts, and thank you for entertaining these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We appreciate your comments and your recommendations to consider. Anyone else in the room? Yes, come on up.
Chip Davis, 115 East Third Street. And you guys have done a great job. Mel and Rain, that was phenomenal, listens, all that. Unfortunately, I have a question, and I don't know if you can respond or...
At least share your question.
Okay. The resiliency fund, is that strictly for natural disasters? Or is there parameters for a resiliency fund?
I'm going to go through that when we go through, but what I'll do is we'll top... We'll bring the resiliency fund up to our first topic of conversation so that you don't have to stay through everything if you don't want to.
Okay.
Yep.
And just one comment that I'm making is... And I am partial to the fire department, as you all know. If you don't know, my son has done the budget for many, many years. Unfortunately, he was not able to do it this year, at this presentation, anyway. Do not overlook... And the reason I was asking about the resiliency fund is the fire department will go under at some point in time. And it's something that as finance people and budget people, you need to look at '27, '28, '29, '30, however you do, because you will be taking that on. Just something to put out there for you all. And again, great job for everybody up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else in the room? Lou, do we have anybody on the line that wants to speak? Raise your hand if you do. Okay. If not, okay. Let's go into our conversations. What I was saying was, let's start with our own agenda quickly. And I did commit that we will discuss resiliency first. All right. Let's just go around the room. Mary Lou, topics that you want to discuss?
Don't start with me.
Don't start with you. Carrie?
A couple things that I would be happy to throw on the table. I like that it's now...
Just the topics, because we're going to build our agenda. Topics.
Can I say, I like that it is a percentage fee rather than a flat tax.
You're talking about resiliency?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Resiliency funding. And that certainly the discussion of parameters of the lockbox are for a later date. But maybe some of the things that are included in the budget could be looked into as well.
Okay.
My question is, as Joe mentioned, when and if values go up? So if we collect more in a pot, does that stay with the resiliency fund? Or is the resiliency fund a flat number, and we give the surplus back?
Okay.
How does it work?
All right.
Two quick questions. I've got a bunch, but two quick ones. Resiliency fund, number one. So when you put the 10% flat tax across, that's for the money received that particular year. So for instance, we have a million...
So your topic is a little bit more on how the resiliency... I'm just trying to get our topic for our agenda. We only have an hour with all of us.
I can pass if you want.
Unless there's something outside of resiliency. Don't pass. I just know that resiliency is clearly a topic.
All right. So my question is, you know, so if we collect $2 million this year, and we have a million left over from this year, the 10% is applicable to the $2 million, not in addition to the $1 million that we've already put a 10% on?
I'm going to raise that in resiliency. Do you have a topic outside of resiliency that you want us to talk about?
Well, there's one other topic. The MSA contributions for continuity purposes as compared for the benchmark, the fire department was asking for X amount of dollars. And one of the questions was, how many of the calls that they took were applicable to downtown Lewis? I think it was 16%? 17%?
Roughly, right.
So I wanted to know, the prorated... The MSA uses the citizens of downtown Lewis only? And if so, does the fire department use the downtown Lewis only? There's no continuity in those...
Yep. Okay.
No, I misunderstood your question.
I know. I assumed you did, so give me your other topic. Okay. All I want, just to clarify. I'm trying to build an agenda in about five minutes, and then we're going to go through everything. So I don't want to hear the idea.
Aside from the resiliency, questions that I think we should visit are the largest driver, as was pointed out by the community input, largest driver of the budget is human resources expenses and police.
Human resources and police?
So I'd like to talk about this.
Yep. Okay.
I'm sorry. I mean, the other one I had on... I'm trying to be fast, because I know you want us to be fast. So the only question I had on resiliency, you know, you have X amount of dollars and put the 10% on, but what happens if you need those transfer tax? Like, we get a big hole. You're going to say, well, that's what the resiliency fund is for. But what happens if you need the street constructions becomes much more than what they are now?
Gotcha.
Because you took the 10%, assuming that you're only going to have to spend...
Absolutely. We'll address that.
Okay.
Absolutely. Joe, topics?
I would like to look at the areas of the budget that have shown what I would consider to be excessive growth. And that one would be the police department.
Okay.
I think that's the major one. The other one that I would like to talk about is kind of the elephant in the room. Two. One, we have collective bargaining coming up with the police, and I think we need to do some things there. I have a couple ideas I'd like to share. And the other thing is, the big elephant in the room is the new municipal building, which we have new plans for. And people are talking $30 million. I don't know if there's a figure.
Okay.
We need to address that.
Thank you. Okay. Joan, topics?
I agree with Rob, overspending in some of these departments, mailing the police department. I want more information on the additional one person you're hiring because with the right resume, I think we can eliminate quite a few of these consultants.
Okay. All right.
And also, I'd like to look at the ones I see there sometimes in the budget here where we have not spent our current budget, but yet the out-years have gone up quite a bit. I think we need to look at that history line.
Okay. Thank you. Online, Mike?
Yes. I'm questioning the feasibility of raising the building permits from 1.5% to 3%. That's doubling the fee. What do other areas charge? That's quite a significant increase for builders. I'd like to talk about that. Also, I would like clarification on the playground spending. We didn't expend it last year. We have it in the future. Is there a total cost of the playground? And then the resiliency fund, back to that. Do we have a goal set of what we're trying to build that fund to?
Okay. Thanks. Scott?
I'd like to put on the table the question of whether the $750k seed funding out of transfer tax is appropriate for year one. I think we're putting a ton of stress on the transfer tax fund between the $1 million of 4th Street Preserve and the fact that it's now essentially a key line item in funding the general fund deficit going forward appropriately towards capital projects. So I'm wondering whether we should be a little more prudent at how quickly we're draining transfer tax and not take that initial seed in the first year. And then the second question, which echoes some of the other comments, is, is this the most stringent budget we could have? As Mr. Morgan said, you know, there's a lot of areas of increased stress. And, you know, if you just look at the contribution that is projected, not for '26, but in the out-years, between the transfer tax contribution and the projected prior-year reserves needed, it goes from $1,202,000 in '26 to over $2,000,000 in '28. So there's a big hole in the budget going forward. And I just wonder if we should have some of those more difficult conversations in this year's planning as opposed to just punting it to '27 and '28.
Okay. All right. Great topics for a one-day workshop, but okay. Let's see what we can do here. Let me start with resiliency to address public and other comments here. So no, there was never a set goal for the resiliency fund by the prior study that was done by the city and our deputy manager, who's online, and he could chime in. However, there was a concept there of about $100 to $150 per parcel, a flat fee. And that was how they were starting to look at the funding. A resiliency fund is used to address a post-natural disaster or to figure out smart ways to be better prepared to address one, if that clarifies for public. So for example, as Carrie mentioned, could a generator be paid for at a resiliency fund? Absolutely. Because why are you having a generator? Backup. Would you have backup prepared that for a natural disaster? Absolutely. Could the 10% match on the Cedar project be viewed as resiliency? Absolutely. What Ellen Lorraine did is, she's just given us where all the... She's done the math. What we then need to do is write those guidelines for the resiliency fund so that as we go through the budget each year, she'll be able... We'll have more... We'll have better information about what would be covered. But I could tell you right now, those are just two examples as we went through that are very appropriate in the guidelines that I have been working on with our deputy mayor has done a lot of time on, and also GMB. So how does resiliency really work? I'm actually... Obviously, this is an area of my interest and specialty in the environmental field. So I'm not just starting it. I'm really letting the public, who encouraged me to do this first. I would also question the stress we're putting on the transient occupants... I mean, the transient... The transfer tax. So personally, I would recommend that we don't put all that $750 over. I think we're putting... It's not that I don't think we need it. Communities that have $30 million in their resiliency fund with one major disaster, see it drained. We're also sitting on top of unknown on FEMA's funding. And that's reality, right? And so we have to... I'm not saying that we won't receive federal funding. I have no insight. All I do is watch the news like everybody else. But I'm more concerned that we're going to have to protect ourselves on coastal communities just like people who have other natural events. So my personal preference to the committee is to say, let's build as much as we can into this fund so that we're ready, and we're starting to do things like Second Street, like the Cedar Street activities. So we are not just going to build back better, but we are actually making changes now. But again, we could not make our TT, the transfer tax, so burdened by everything. Now, how does it... What are we recommending? The percentages on the resiliency fund, as Ellen Lorraine described, are the guidelines that we're saying. Okay. But that doesn't mean that in the next-year review, once we get more data, that we say, you know what? We're recommending that that's our floor, and we'd like to increase it. Or we're actually finding it's too much of a stress. Remember that you're only recommending a one-year budget to council. But the beauty of the multi-year is this kind of conversation. I'm so glad we've done it because if you do a one-year budget review, you have blinders on. You're not seeing what's on the horizon. So yes, the 2%, you know, the... From parking, all of that is how we built this. But if we want to come back off the $750 direct transfer, that's fine. Now, public safety is resiliency. And so we're fine in terms... And Alex, I'm nodding, but yeah. We're using... The resiliency fund is being built in a way when we take from the transfer tax an allowable, appropriate scope. It is public safety. So there's a lot of variables going forward. But I would recommend that we... My proposal on that topic would be to reduce that $750 coming from the transfer tax in half. Okay? Just, yes, we're going to give it some seed money, but we're not going to take the whole. The other thing I just want to comment, which I think, Carrie, was your comment... The other thing I just want to comment, which I think Carrie, was your comment as well. What I like about where we are in resiliency is we are sharing the burden across. Our citizens have a part, our visitors have a part, the city's putting in some money, the sale and the transfer tax means those buying and selling, so those who are leaving but have enjoyed our community are actually giving us some funding and the ones coming in. So I have been really moved by the conversations over the last several months that a sole flat fee is not fair. It's not fair to burden just residents. This is, to me, the tapestry of how a community pays for resiliency.
What's the status of the guidelines? That's the first question. And the second is, how will this be governed?
So the biggest guideline right now that is pretty much agreed to is you would have to have a super majority of councils, okay? So rather than the three, the three as the majority, you would have to have four to tap this money. And the reason for that is, you can see, this money is going to get to $5, $8 million, $10 million. So councils from now are, with new city managers, because everyone here will be retired, will say, let's tap into that. So we're trying to say to our future councils, uh-uh, because we're protecting this. So that's the one that I think there is just general agreement on. The second one is, I would think that we will probably finish that in the next six weeks as guidelines.
Great.
Thank you. You're welcome. Larry?
Couple of quick comments. So, resiliency fund, great idea. How you fund it, great idea. A couple of concerns that I would request you take in consideration when you put in the guidelines. So, you know, natural disasters makes all kind of common sense to me, but I can listen just to conversations today. You can, you can, a clever person can fix streets either out of the general fund, transfer tax, resiliency funds. So not sure how you put a goal of how much you need until you clearly define what it can be utilized for.
Yes, yes, absolutely. It has to have the, here's what you can use it for and here's what you cannot use it for. And the cannot might be just as important as what you can use it for.
Because as you're well aware, as these funds grow, it's going to be a natural target.
It is.
You know, oh, God, I got 800, I see this all the time.
Right, exactly, yeah. It looks like a big piggy bank.
It looks like a big.
Until the day you have to crack it open, and then you don't have enough. So, but yes, the do and the don't, how it's used.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Other comments?
That does raise another question. Are we envisioning in this resiliency fund that should FEMA stay in operation, and I remind everybody that the states were the ones that actually requested FEMA be created, so one would think it would remain, that we would be giving homeowners money from the resiliency fund to subsidize requests for FEMA rebuilding? Is that part of what we see it, or this is really just?
This would be, it's envisioned as community-wide for safety. It's not like you would get something or somebody else would. Now, that doesn't mean that resiliency couldn't, let's say we have a natural disaster and we put in money for food and water that everybody would benefit from, okay? So those things can happen. There's also been a conversation that, in the resiliency fund, that you need to generate about $2 million that you could use, that's fairly liquid, so you could match the grants that are coming in. The city is looking at four grants right now to apply for, and BPW is totally separate, is looking at another. We're like six and they're four, because there's a lot of current funding in the FEMA/DEMO world. So the concept would be, you keep a few million reasonably liquid, and then you put a long-term investment strategy that we had asked Mary Lou and Tina to work on, so you protect that balance and you're really growing that balance, which might mean for future councils and finance committees, oh, we could reduce the amount because our fund itself is generating money and balancing, balancing that forward.
There's been some discussion, obviously, in the budget about a tax increase for this purpose, or part of, for this purpose. And as I've said in some of my input, I'm against a tax increase until we see the fallout from the tax assessment.
Okay, let's, if we're done with resiliency in general, let's go on to that one, because that's the most heated one probably. So I just want to, I want to say that a, just so we have the math, the average tax bill in Lewis right now, not the county's change, is $800.
Residential, yes.
Residential. So 5% is $40 a year. So percents convey something, but then real math conveys something else. So the 20%, it's not that the stewardship committee was going high and then starting to negotiate. We were, we just didn't know what all of the expenses would be. Now that we've seen the expenses are what they are, in the last round of this weekend, we could see that we could dramatically drop even the proposal of that, of that 5%. But Ellen Lorraine, can you clarify? Because I think there is, well, first of all, when has the city last done any change to property tax? When is the county? And then explain to everybody when that county assessment arrived on their door and they had some level of sticker shock, but they haven't seen one for a decade plus. When will they have to pay whatever that is going to come down as?
So the city last did a reassessment in the year 2000.
Okay, so 25 years ago is the first, in the year 2000?
Years 2000. The county has just completed their reassessment, and they will be using those new values with their billing in July of '25.
And that billing will be due, so all of us as residents?
September 30th is when the county tax bills are due.
Okay, so we'll have to pay, this year, we will have a payment made to the county.
Right, right.
And then if we put in our whatever, if we choose to recommend a council any property tax increase, that would go in the bill that citizens would receive in?
April of this year.
And it'd be due in June?
Correct.
Then what happens next fiscal year?
So should council elect to use the county's assessed values, then they would be implemented April of '26 billing.
Okay.
That would be the soonest. And the rate that the city uses would have to be reduced so that we are revenue neutral on that billing for year one.
And the amount of county money that we all have to pay the county tax, how much of that is seen in value to the city of Lewis ballpark, or like what, what comes in?
The city does not receive direct funding from the county except for the police department. The county does fund the police department $40,000.
So when we get, so we as citizens get a tax bill from the county, and we live in the county, we don't at City Hall receive, minus police, any benefit? I mean, I know there's global benefit by being in the county. I'm not in any way discrediting the county's services that they provide, but there's no revenue that comes into your budget. Okay, I just wanted to clarify the facts on that, I think.
So if I'm understanding this right, if we had the 5% property tax increase this year, we could do that, and we'd end up with the budget that we've seen. If we don't, then we go forward into the next year, and if we go with the Sussex County system, we can't raise taxes at all above where they are. That means we've got two years looking forward with no new revenue coming in from our property. And we're also talking about the fact that we're a little nervous about using this transfer fund. Well, that will force us to have to use more of that transfer fund or take monies out of savings to balance the budget. So I think it's, what I like about this budget, I'm just going to say this, is that it's kind of a balance of giving everyone a little piece of the pie. It doesn't hit us hard. I mean, it's not like it's a 20%. And I understand your rationale, Mary Lou, but if we don't do anything this year, we're two years out. We can't do anything.
Right.
So that little 5% at least would help us with our resiliency fund, and I mean, you've seen the, the growth here is amazing.
Other comments on the, on the property tax?
Real quick comment. I think it's, Ellen Lorraine was kind enough to spend some time with me after the last meeting explaining what she just said. I think that's extremely critical point, and I would guess that 99% of people don't understand that. They think if you raise your taxes now, well, now I got a reassessment coming, I'm going to raise them again, I'm going to raise me, it's a multiplier effect. That's what they think. So that's, I don't know what the council or how you guys want to do that. Maybe a little example you can show, an example, hey, if we did this, this, and this, it's only going to be this and this because of that, that, and that. That's a critical point.
I like that, this, this.
I'm sorry.
No, it is totally true.
Perception is every second.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And so your point is well taken, because you're going to have to re-strike the rate to basically a tax equalization rate.
Correct.
To stay revenue neutral.
Right.
But I think people initially are going to be in shock when they get their county property tax bill, and that's, there's going to be spillover, because people aren't going to distinguish between school tax, county tax, and city tax.
They don't care. They just care, all they care about is what I'm going to get at the bottom line.
My point is, I'd rather wait until the dust settle, calm people down, because we can lose the whole thing, meaning people might be against the resiliency fund. You know, you sort of have to balance things out. And Joe, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I also worry about losing the momentum of public support.
Yeah.
For other things that this committee is trying to.
Oh, I get it. It just kind of dawned on me, and I know I had heard that before, that the first year you get the tax, the second year you don't. And I think with the Sussex County tax, I believe it's supposed to be revenue neutral the first year, but it's also based upon creating equity. So you might have had a house that was undertaxed, so it'll be neutral revenue, revenue neutral, but it will reflect the true value of your house in comparison to all the other folks that have been paying in. It's a reapportionment.
Yeah. I mean, I think the message that I heard from all, each of you on this topic individually has been, this is not the first lever we pull, it's the last lever we pull, okay? And I think that's important that we convey that to council. In other words, we didn't start with, let's just increase property tax dramatically. And again, that $40 per year, in my opinion, is modest, in that it's being sensitive to people's ability to pay, but also sensitive to the environment we're all in because of the Sussex County, and the fact of a quarter of a century, we haven't raised taxes. Okay, a quarter of a century. And has life changed? Did we all benefit during that time for the increase in value? Yes, we did. So it's, that's the hard one for me to say, to say no to property tax. But again, we're advising, that's up to the, to the council. So my view on this one is, we took the stewardship, and they had blinders on, the stewardship subcommittee, because we didn't know all of the expenses, and we dramatically, significantly reduced the proposal that's in front of all of you. And then we attached the resiliency part to it so that every taxpayer knows, this is your share, just like we're saying, hey, visitors, you're going to pay your share by short-term rental, hotel, parking. So this was the resident share of that part.
So how, let's say what we have on the table gets modified again. We have a deadline to get a budget to council, and what is that?
Well, we have a deadline today to advise Ellen Lorraine. Then her deadline by charter is?
February 15th.
Is February 15th?
So we don't have a lot of time.
No, no, it's February 1st.
So she has to get her budget by February 1st, and then?
Yeah.
To council by the 15th, yep.
Yeah, so she, her deadline is Saturday, okay? And so this is our deadline. And again, what I would say to all of you, and I know, let me say one thing, next year it's not going to feel like this, because this is the first time we've ever looked at a five-year budget. We're on steroids going through this process, okay? So my view is, I'm going to have a mini-budget subcommittee who's going to work all year with Ellen Lorraine. So we're going to say, oh, look, that didn't happen the way we thought, or that's more, that's less. So that next year when we start this process, we're going to start this in late fall, but we'll have a team of us looking as we go. I'm saying that to you not only to get anybody's blood pressure down, but also because this is our recommendation. Council's also going to make their changes, so I have no problem on any topic to say, we're recommending X, but there is disagreement or pause in our recommendation. So it, giving them the support for where we feel strongly or we don't feel strongly about things, okay? So that would help on that. Anything else on?
Can I, can I comment on this, please?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
I really think 5% is very reasonable for raising the property tax. Originally, we were talking about a percentage increase plus a $100 per parcel fee.
Right.
For the resiliency fund. If that $100 per parcel was implemented, that alone would have been over 12% increase for the average.
Exactly. That's right. I'm glad you raised that, Mike, because that was the, kind of the recommendation of the predecessor study. And so, yeah, that math is more than what we're proposing.
And I would want to jump in on this tax piece, too. When we originally played around with the 20% increase, I gasped, and I thought, community isn't going to take this. But I think a 5% increase is fair, and I think what we need to think about is, for those of us who have had the benefit of not having a tax increase because we've had the privilege of living in Lewis for a quarter, you know, 24 years, time to pony up. You know, you're getting benefits. And for those of us who came from other places, taxes are still dirt cheap here, and asking us to give more to be a place that we all want to be is, you know, I think, a fair request right now. So I think the 5% should stay. Whether or not we come back and look at how much of the monies goes into the reserve this year, I like your suggestion of half going in this year, and then let's see where we are. But I think let's go ahead and increase taxes this year.
I think that's prudent. What I'm concerned about, and I don't know if we're discussing different areas, but I think that we need to have some cost containment.
Yes.
In certain areas of the budget. And I think that would help us moving forward, because Mr. Morgan made some very good observations, and I think we have a couple of areas that are just growing incrementally, and we have to ask ourselves, you know, is this appropriate? One of the things that I would recommend is, and I don't know if there's any interest in this kind of thing, but with the police expenses, one of the things that concerns me is, we had an MOU for a salary increase of 19% outside the contract this year. And so that's floating.
And just to clarify for the public, that was approved by council because the chief really came forward and shared his inability to recruit. So in other words, we didn't just give them, as you know, we didn't just give them an increase. The request was, I can't deliver on filling out the police force. Let me just pause just for a second, Joe, because on all of the departments, I just want to reiterate that Ellen Lorraine and Janet have gone through the initial requests that those departments made, and they have trimmed those. They've either moved them out or they've trimmed them. But one of the benefits of a multi-year budget is its compound interest. You start to look at, well, if it just grows, even by putting things down to 2%, it just grows and grows and grows. And if our city doesn't grow, then there's a balance that's wrong. And one of the things that I think you're hearing from the finance committee is a commitment to give you the resources as city manager to run this city, but when you start looking at the multipliers in five years, in every department, every department, it looks like a lot of people, right? And so more than maybe a citizenry full-time of 3,000-plus need. So that's the, again, we're not making a decision on the multi-year budget, we're making a one-year, but that's the view in that goes, makes everybody pause. Now, specifically, I think we've heard the most comments, which we're not surprised by, by the police department. It is, so let's focus on that one.
Yeah. I just wanted to finish my thought here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So 19%, if you look five years out, we're going from, now we have a $2.1 million budget, taking it out to 205, it goes up to $4 million. It almost doubles. And right now, this year, there were $750,000 worth of increases. Of that, $429,000, I believe, was salary. So we haven't done any collective bargaining yet, and I understand there's a small amount of money tucked away somewhere in the budget, but depending how that goes, we're going to have another large incremental increase in that area again next year. So what I was wondering is, you know, I don't know how collective bargaining goes, but should there be a person from the finance committee on the collective bargaining team?
Joe, to follow up on that, I'd like to know more about the collective bargaining and who negotiates, who represents the city of Lewis?
Who opened the city? So, go ahead, Ellen.
Yes, it'll be myself, and we have an attorney that does, and council deputy mayors, Khalil Khalil Sliwol will be on there.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's a really good idea, Joe, to have a member of the finance committee involved in that negotiating team. You know, everybody has a very different perspective, right?
That's interesting. Yeah. I think that's a reasonable proposal we make to council. It's their choice, but I think that proposal, Larry, you've had experience in collective bargaining, has anybody else? I know I have not. You've had?
I, I went to president union for 16 years. I did seven collective bargaining agreements, not just with my union, but with other unions. And it's, it's not, it's tricky stuff.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody's resume beats that. Mine certainly doesn't. So I think if we're all good, let's recommend it to city council that we would like, we'd like a finance member on, and our recommendation would be Larry because of his expertise.
Would you be willing to do that, Larry?
Yeah, but I'm not, I hate the word expert.
Well, if you've done it, you've been in it, you've experienced.
Expert means you never make mistakes, but, but I'm sorry for the clarification.
And I think that we're all agreeing that even whatever way we go with the taxes, that there has to be concurrent budget cuts as far as what's been presented to us. It's fantastic that it's been trimmed down now, but there's still a lot of fat there. I think the question is, knowing that we want to keep a control for a town of 3,300 people, we want to keep a control on the size of the budget, what is most important? And I think I like that concept of saying, here's what we can give you.
Well, you know, in running a company in, in downturn times, not that we have downturn times, one of the tools we used in our budget process was to be able to say, we're only going to give departments, I'm not a favor of freezes, because freezes create chaos. Okay? But I am a favor of, we're going to give you 40% of your budget, and we're going to have a very official six-month review, or whatever we would decide. It allows the departments to keep moving and doing their services, whatever that percentage is, but it also allows us to have some reins on just what you're saying, and well, I think you're all saying, which is, are we getting a little bit out of alignment here? And there may be things that would be below and, and above.
Can you give an example of what that would look like in this budget?
So, so there's actually a good example that's already in the budget, which is the facility. The facility folks want to have a new trash truck. We said, no, we're not going to fund all of that in this year, because we know there's going to be a study done. However, we, we do appreciate down payments have to happen. So we're telling you, department, we're going to give you some money so you can put in a bid at the right time, but it's not yours. And if the efficiency study says we don't need it, I'm sure there's some loss in deposit as there would be in all cases, but the fact is, it comes back. So I think that's, that's just an example that's already in, but I think we can, I think that's something our city managers can do. They can go to their staff and say, the finance committee is concerned about efficiencies and tightening our belt, but we also appreciate the services you offer. So go back in, we're still, we could still recommend this budget, but we could tell council, we're gonna ask Ellen Lorraine to put whatever, you know, 60% can be allocated, and then you come back to the finance committee every quarter and, and say what's happened. Because the revenue could change, too. I mean, everything changes, we all know that in budgets.
Well, the other area that, that I had mentioned, and I think we need to keep our eye on the ball, is we have some proposals for a new city hall. And that's going to be a monumental task, as well as a monumental expense in the future.
Yep.
Be it five years away, two years away. And I don't know that, that we've all, are we committed to that?
Well, I think, from the finance committee, I think we should raise that issue to say, council, this is a huge undertaking, and we don't know where you are in, in your macro schedule, but we think, we need to know sooner than later, so we can start strategizing for it in the next budget. That includes bond council presentations. So that's why it, it can't leave our spreadsheets, but there's so, everything is up in the air on that topic. I mean, everything.
Didn't the National Guard tell Lewis that they had to make a decision by certain date because of environmental issues and so, and has that date passed?
No, the date hasn't passed. They, the mayor and the deputy mayor are working directly with the army on what the army's responsibilities would have to still be related to providing a safe property, and what ours would be. Okay? So safe is, it's just how much of safe is paid for by whom? Okay?
Environmental.
Yes, yes. Because, you know, we know there's diesel fuel. I mean, it was, it was a depot for a while. So the army has provided some information. What I would say is, as a finance committee, we need to take on, well, what does bond placement really look like? What are the practices? But that's not this year's budget, but I'm with you, Joe, fully, to say to the council, we're worried, and we're going to start budgeting, because we don't want to see you come to us in three years and say, do you have X tons of millions of dollars available? Because we're ready to go. Okay? So.
And I think the public needs to know that, too.
Yes.
If we're committing ourselves to, I don't know, I've heard the figure, 30 million passed around, I mean, that could be, that could be a minimum number.
Yeah. Okay. Let's go on to some.
Let me piggyback one more thing on that. So it's good that we got some more support on the negotiation for the police contract, but I think that, we mentioned that human resources is a gigantic percentage of this budget as in all budgets.
Sure.
So I think we might want to revisit, can the city continue to be so generous in the benefits that it provides?
Yes, I think that's a, one of the things that I'm hoping from the email, you know, when I summarize comments, is to go through the activity, the topics we have to discuss in this next fiscal year. And the human resource, as you said, in every budget, it's all about people, but then it's the benefits on top.
Yeah. And as part of that, don't forget, there are a lot of people that have city vehicles that they take home, is my understanding, and do we really need to do that? That's a substantial increase. I also worry because we've got 45 full-time employees for 3,300 people, and I think the budget eventually proposes at least a dozen more, and then two more HR people to take care of those people. It's a lot of people for a little city. And so I keep reminding us, I'm not quite sure how that works in the budget. If you get half of your truck in the budget in one year, does that mean you've actually bought a truck and committed to it, so you're going to get your money anyway, and we just delay the inevitable? Or how are we making these assessments to say?
Okay.
And so that's what I go back to.
Yes.
I think there's a lot of people who have said they would be willing to sit in as citizens and hear discussions about budgets on benefits, on collective bargaining, on garbage pickup, on parking, on, on any kind of thing. And I think we should.
Larry, can I, can I suggest that what we'd recommend, I'm not saying we go in the details on B2, but just as much as the stewardship subcommittee said, we need to look at parking, we need to look at refuse, let's put the category of HR and benefits as a study that we're proposing.
Yeah. And I also think we should look at some parts of the city as, I hate to say it, but revenue centers, does it really make sense to invest as much in the marina, given what the marina actually produces for the city? And that's not to say the government should be providing a profit to its people, but in some situations where it's sort of run like a company, maybe we need to actually look at that and see whether they're cost efficient.
Okay. Yeah, to look at what comes in. Let me go on to a couple of items, because we've got.
Real quick, I'm sorry. So the, the budget being proposed is with no additions, you know, the last meeting, you know, this department wants this, this department's want that. Did the budget that being proposed is the static condition of Lewis municipality now?
Yeah.
Yes, it is not what department managers shared October 22nd.
That's my question.
Yeah. It's not even the budget we saw in front of us the last time. There've been trims, for example, there was a, part of the dock service came down. I think that was a 62% increase, and you reduced that again. So we are trending down on costs and sharing you on the revenue. Go ahead, Mary.
I think you illustrated in the budget, 4.5% going forward on the police in terms of payroll, right? I'd like to see some recently completed contracts in area towns or counties, and what their increases have been in their contracts with the unions.
Yeah.
Interesting enough, a lot of our neighbors are in contract negotiations now as well.
I would like to see some completed ones, even if they've gone to arbitration, specifically, maybe, even if they've gone to arbitration.
That'll take some research, because if they haven't.
I understand.
Meaning, they haven't ratified them, that's why. So they'll be three years old.
I saw, I saw in the comments, someone had mentioned that maybe there needs to be a study to see what size police force a town like this should have, based upon the numbers and the statistics for our, for our town. I, I don't know if that can happen.
Well, I think that's part of, when you really look at HR, not looking just at benefits, you're looking at right size. So it's right sizing for a community that's in the 3,000, but then peaks again, you know, I mean, we have to remember, we are not just 3,000 people, we can be 15,000-plus, and so what demands are placed on our departments because of that? Okay. I want to go through a couple of other topics that you all have raised that we could get answers on. The playground, Janet, you could address that, the question about the, the playground. I think, Mike, that was yours.
So this is the Canalfront Park Playground that was approaching, if not beyond, 20 years of age. It did not meet current playground safety standards. It came in, the bid came in at just under $400,000. We have, the city has received a $125,000 grant through the outdoor recreation trails and parks through Denrec. We have been notified just this month that we have received a second grant through the same source for $100,000. I don't think that's reflected here, because we have not really gotten the official notification, but we got the maximum that could be requested on that grant. So we have $225,000 in grant money to support the project.
Right? Mike, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. So we could be overfunded on that possibly if we get the grant.
Correct, correct. Yeah. This isn't, you know, there are a lot of places that we're looking at grants, that if we're successful, they'll, they'll come in and, and manage some of the costs that we have out of the operating fund. The next group I want to go to.
I just, yeah, one more comment on the playground. Two things on that. Number one, when we do these contracts, are we actually holding people to a timeline with a penalty that's attached to it? That thing says, come in October 20, 2024, and it's not here yet.
So, so the delay on, on this particular project was, we were notified in November that there was a piece of equipment that was not shipped. And unfortunately, it wasn't going to be shipped until January 17th, which is now pushed back to early February. The other delay was, once the weather got cold, in order to put down the safety surfacing, there has to be a temperature of at least 50 degrees for that surfacing to settle. It's a rubber playground safety surfacing, so they don't, you know, typically use mulch anymore.
Let me ask, let me, let me take that to a broader level from the finance committee, because Parks and Recs and others are managing that. One of the things that we discussed for a project in '26, and Larry and I, I either volunteered you, or we both volunteered, to actually look at template RFPs and contracts. So, so that's an effort that we're going to look at, so that we have standard processes. I mean, we have, we have good processes, but I'm just saying, let's look at all the times we go out in our procurement policy and our bidding, and then what are the flow-down contracts that come to someone who's awarded to their subs or consultants, as well as penalties if not serving? So your financial question, glad we got the playground answer, but the financial question is, yes, contract procurement management can be a really significant factor to hold people responsible for what they've agreed to. So that's on the, on the list. The other major, I mean, I'm hearing all of you, and I'm trying to manage our clock. There was a lot of conversation about the new hires and the consultants. So council has given our city managers, you know, I'd like one of these, and one of these, and here's why. I think we could propose a hold on the additional positions. I want to talk about the finest one, because that's a real, reallocation of somebody's work. To say, we want to wait and see how this budget goes, council, can you hold off a little bit on these, because we're going to try to see if we can work with an existing staff? So what does that really mean? I don't mean that for things like the comp plan, things that are unique, that have to happen at a certain time.
Would that include all departments?
It would include what's in the budget right now, which would say, it's not saying all new hires, it's saying where we looked at, I think, Joan, one of your comments was, when we looked at consultants.
Right.
Okay. Do we really need those? Could people really do those? I mean, there could be career advancement in-house. The one area that the finance committee, as we all know, has really hit home on is, we've got to have, because our city manager used to also be our CFO, just because she moved, she's now taken on, she has two jobs. That is not, at a minimum. And that's just not going to work. And, you know, just the last five months of the burden we've placed on her, just on finance. So one of the recommendations was, look at, and Ellen Lorraine has looked at, reassigning a current staff person in the finance department, full-time to work on investment management, audit interface, some of those functions, to take those off her, and move that person to report directly to her. Okay? So, so it's not a finance officer, it's not a new hire, it's a reallocation of someone's responsibilities, addressing what our concern was. On the other is like a city engineer, well, we've got GMB currently on the books, that would be one we could say to council, we hear you, but we'd like to put that off, and then really look at the contracts, on, on those contracts that we currently have, and say, could we, could you take the workload? And even if that was a slight increase, but it wouldn't be the full amount. So we could look at all of the public relations, the engineers, all of those positions, and we could, as a group, say, we'd like you, we'd like you to hold on that. Because we think there are efficiencies, we think there are reallocations, but they could come back and say, you know, I, you know, we really want X. Okay? So, but we could make that statement. We could say, we question the growth in departments and the increase in consultants. We'd like to let the city manager have the freedom to see if she could deliver that in-house. And if she can't, she can't. And then she would, so you'd still leave her a little budget, so she has some room to maneuver.
And I would go on that financial piece. I think our council will probably chime in on this, too, that we might be a little uncomfortable having one person wear two hats when it deals with finance, so you may actually want to change that title to something that's finance-related, so that one person is overlooking the money.
Yes, I think the recommendation was finance director. So not a CFO, that's not the level yet, but a finance director. Yes, good, very good point. Okay. And not that the other comments.
Still, my last question on that is, if we're going to cut back on, I'm not quite sure where you went with that. I heard you say, we're not going to cut all new hires, but we're going to look at some of the new hires. How does that work in the budget when we've proposed people can have like a half a hire or a half a truck?
So, again.
A year.
Yeah. The half a truck sounds crazy, but, okay, and I will address it.
I understand what you're saying, I just don't know how it works.
So my sense is that our city manager, again, no freezes, our city manager is given resources, but if she knows, it's funny to talk about you when you're right here. So if Ellen Lorraine says, you know what, I really would like this new hire in this department, but I can see they can wait six months. Okay? Then she's going to wait on those, but she'll have some hires that, that, we have departments that are, are breaking, they need support. So she, that's her responsibility to allocate that. She would just know she doesn't have 100% of that line item. Okay? So then it's her, because she's the manager, she's the executive, she chooses how to handle that. She comes back to the finance department and says, you know what, it's worked, we're fine. Or, you know, here's why I need that extra, whatever it is, 25% that you all wanted. We keep some control in Raines, but we give her the discretion to run her operation. So that's what I would be recommending.
Yeah. And Ellen Lorraine, I know that's an uncomfortable position in, to be in, to be a city employee, and also looking at other city employees about what they want, but I will encourage you that it seems like the consensus of this committee is, be judicious in how you look at hires just for this year, till we get a grasp on what's going on. And if you get the stink eye from somebody, you can blame it all on us, because we have said, this is really the goal, is to go forward like this.
I will just say, in the '26 budget, three additional staff is what's in there.
Right.
So, just to give you, and I, it may have sounded like a lot more, but it was three, when you look at the entire.
Does not include the police increases?
That does not include police. No, it does not include police, yeah.
No, but it does include the additional officer in that three.
The officer, includes the officer.
To go from 17 to 18, yes.
So let me see if I can kind of see, I'm not creating the motion, but let me just see if I have the consensus. What I believe we'd be recommending is a reduction in the resiliency funding from the transfer tax to reduce that to 375. That's half of what we had in our proposal. We would be recommending with hesitation, a property tax increase of 5%, of which 2% of that does feed the resiliency fund. We would be sharing our concern over the significant costs of the police department as, in two ways, as a percentage of the whole budget and also for rightsizing for our community. So we would like to offer that a seasoned collection bargainer from the Lewis Finance Committee, Larry, would attend. We offer that service to Ellen Lorraine and to our deputy manager. We would authorize the budget to our city manager, but ask her to use a, a measured response to increases, allowing her the authorization of about 75% of this budget. She doesn't have to go up to 75, but basically up to about 75 so she can run her operation and reserving until, A, the, the studies are done that, that are needed to help look at those costs. And B, just the reality of, of the flow of revenues and other activities. So she can keep going in her operations, but she has a bit of a pause to not go full bore on that activity. Now, there were a lot of other little things, but I think, you know, I want to hold at the highest level for guidance because of her ability to get that, the budget through. Then the other recommendations would, would stay. How are you all about that?
About that 75% number.
I'd like to comment.
Okay, Mike, go ahead.
On the reducing to 750,000 in half. Because that money, or why we're doing that? Because that money's going to come directly out of reserves, and there are more than enough reserves to fund that. So I don't see the necessity of cutting that in half.
Okay, coming out of reserves, we're looking at the.
You're talking about the 750,000 seed money to the resiliency fund.
Right.
That money, even though it looks like the line item, it's coming out of this year's budget. It really isn't.
Right.
It's coming from reserves.
Okay, so the reason why I'm recommending that reduction, twofold. I think, but I'd like that you raise it again because we may put a caveat to council. So if council did not go forward with a property tax, then we've lost the citizen participation in the resiliency fund. Then where are we going to come up with that? It's not the dollar issue, it's more the contribution. The second is, I'm concerned about collective bargaining. I'm concerned about the costs that we may have to bear. And so I just want to make sure that we're not, I, I like not to pull from reserves unless we have to. So I do like spending the money we bring in. I think the deferred maintenance, all of that, has not been the right culture. We got Rose, we have issues. But I don't like dipping into the reserves unless we have to. So I would hold, but maybe revise that as post-collective bargaining. I'm not saying the money is just coming on police. But at that 75% marker, we could also go back and say, release that extra amount of money from the transfer tax-generated reserves and put that into resiliency. We don't have to do a one-time allocation to resiliency. So I'm just trying to pause on a few things till we see the, the data and the math. And then we could make that recommendation, say, we'd like to go back into that and go to our full 750. I'm trying to.
Just to clarify on that, the reduction in the transfer, out of transfer tax to resiliency would just reduce the year-one seeding of resiliency.
That's right, correct.
And thus it would reduce the stress on transfer tax reserves. That money wouldn't come out of general fund reserves. It would just reduce the aggregate amount that this resiliency fund starts with. And, and, and that would reduce the stress on the transfer tax reserves.
That's right, that's the perfect way that you just said that, Scott, thank you, yes, that's what it would.
Yeah, but just to comment, I'm, I'm, I don't see the stress on the reserve fund given its dollar amount at this point.
Well, if you look at the out-year projections, the amount of stress is not a one-year event, it's a multi-year event, especially if the transfer tax revenues end up dipping. You could, you could significantly drain what's, you know, a $7.8 million account. So the question is, where, where is it more important that those reserves exist? In the transfer tax fund or in the brand-new resiliency fund?
It's a good point.
That's a good point. The other, the other thing is, I think on the, our investment team, we're going to have to look at how much money needs to be liquid? How much money is in reserves? That's why I don't want to dip into reserves too much, because I want to be able to say, what's the good, best management practice going forward in a multi-year budget? As you look at the multi-year budget, you see, we're dipping into reserves. Now, that doesn't mean that is what we're going to do. It's just saying, that's how you balance a budget right now with no other eyes in. So the investment team of our committee can say, you only need X amount in reserves, and you should feel comfortable. And a lot of different organizations will say, six months of your operations. We have to get comfortable as a city to decide what that number is. How much is liquid, how much is in reserves? So should the worst occurrence happen, we actually have money. So if we don't have to dip into it right now, until we have those metrics, I prefer we not dip into it.
So just, just a thought, thinking out loud. I know how things go when council has to make a decision, and it's as complex as this one, all right? And if we start pulling and tugging at this fragile budget that's been put together without the background that we have sitting around this table, it's going to be difficult to make those decisions. Because if you do this, this happens. This is going to have to happen, this is going to have to happen. Is there any way that when the budget comes to us and we're discussing this budget, that we can have some of the expertise we have here to advise us as we're making the decisions in council? Because we could make a fatal mistake if we, for example, if we decide we're not going to go with the tax increase for property, we've got some big holes in there. And if we don't properly do that, the other option would be to have a smorgasbord of options. But now we'll have four or five very complex matrix in front of us.
Joe, I think your point's really, really important. So in a, not treating it like a public hearing where people have comments.
Yeah.
But we can, and Alex, correct me, but we can have subject matter experts available for council deliberations.
Absolutely, anyone can make public comment.
Okay, so I, I think that's what we could, basically, what we could do is we, and I'm not saying the Finance Committee has to do this, but Joe, you and I and Ellen Lorraine and Janet, we could outline for the council, here's your budget, you know, what are all your questions appropriately? And then we could say, all right, we're going to need Mary Lou, see if you're available online to do this, or Scott. So they have those. I think that's a great way, we have so much talent around this table.
We really do.
That we want to be able to keep, keep using you. I also think what, what I've been seeing in our own deliberations too is, and I really compliment everybody here, we've tried to stay high. Look at the big items, you know, a plotter. You know, I'm, I'm never going to spend my time, okay? I'll just say this as your chair, looking at whether we should buy a plotter or not. It's not worth my time. The city manager makes that decision with her department heads. But the overhaul, we've got to get agreement on, is this the framework we want for the budget? Is this how we'd like the allocations to come from? And then there's tweaking that has to happen all the time. So, you know, is it 2% from parking? I don't know, maybe it's 1.7. But the concept is what we're trying to get, which is visitors pay. You know, that's a different, it's, that's to me, the benefit of what we've done. So I like that recommendation to add in, that we actually help structure the council conversations and make sure we make available at their deliberations, people that can.
And they can be live, we can ask them questions and they can talk back to us and all that.
And Alex, you're fine with that, because they're here as, you know, sometimes we do that with other specialists, whether they're scientists, developers.
Absolutely, council might have an opinion on how that exactly looks. Perhaps it could be an agenda item topic, or it could just fall under public comment.
Yes.
Council might have a thought on that.
Okay, so I think that's another good.
All right, yes, and I agree now to defer half the seed funding.
Okay.
Based on this discussion. And I think Scott had the idea, and I think this would help also, to see the stress on the fund itself or the reserves, is on the worksheet, we project out what the balance of the funds will be in the future years per the budgets that are projected.
Yeah, I think that's, you've got that captured. I would also say that when you introduce the budget to the council, start with your email summary before you get into spreadsheets. Because again, we want them to give us feedback on, are we even on the right track on these things, right? And then, then it's, the devil is in the details. But I think that concept of, you know, it's like explaining the 75%. It's, it's, why are we recommending that? Why are we recommending protecting reserves for a while? It's like really giving the philosophy or the methodology of how we've deliberated to them first.
Another question. When, we, we did a, a draft of a budget that we could go through, and there were tabs at the bottom, and we could hit and go to the different departments. But that's, that wasn't in this last spreadsheet. We have to scroll all the way down. Can we have those tabs added to make it easier for us?
So what was attached is a PDF version. What I think you're asking for is an Excel document.
Right, and he had locked, I think Mike said, he can lock that Excel document so that we won't make it difficult.
You can't make changes.
Right, you can't make changes, but we can do the scrolling and easy looks.
I, I actually kind of like the PDF copy because it's shareable to more people.
Right.
Okay.
I think by, I think what you were referring to, Joe, is where in the Excel, you can hover over the, the cell, and it would give you notes attached to it.
Well, I think at the bottom of the screen, like if you wanted to look at a particular department.
The yellow areas was to spell out what those notes were.
Okay.
So that you can see the notes in the PDF copy.
Okay.
Yeah.
As well as the Excel copy.
Yeah, I like the PDF too, and, and I'm trying to be careful in my words to say, this is a re-engineered budget that is having different tools to present the data. And the work we've all done at the subcommittee in this level is not to replace the direction or guidance or questions of council, but we're not asking you to do, council, what we've already done, okay? That doesn't mean that you don't, as a council member, want to say, I'd like a little more clarity on this department, of course. But the fact is, it's like our planning commission or bike pet. We as citizens have done a lot of work here. And the good of that, hopefully, is to clarify for council, okay? So, so what I'm trying to say is, you don't have to go back into the old days, but that doesn't mean you don't, you have the total freedom, you're, you're the elected official, to ask any question you want, on any topic.
Do we want to try to move something while we still have members here?
Yes, so we'd like.
Do we want to try to move them by piece as to the tax increase that concurrent cuts?
No, I think we should try to do a collective motion, one motion.
Ask a question for the committee. So as I understand it, one of the recommendations is to budget 75% of the '26 proposed budget, right? Is that how I, that is less than the adopted 25 budget?
Oh, good point, okay. Let me say it differently. It's not to propose, I'm not saying that the budget is 75% reduced. I'm saying the expenditure outlay.
Okay.
You have the, so in my mind, I'm voting on the approval of the budget as I see it with the minor changes. But with the caveat of direction, that you have the money in the bank, but you cannot withdraw. There's 25% to hold on, and then you can come back to us and say when you need that released. Because you're looking at, is the revenue following properly? You know, is something else tanked and our, our interest numbers are wrong? I'm giving you freedom, but I'm not saying a 75% reduction, but I'm not saying that, that in terms of my vote.
I wanted to have clarifying language.
Yeah. So yes. No, 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 I'm, thanks for the clarification. Okay, all right. So I think, I think we should do a motion on the whole because it's, it's, it's the whole project giving her, giving Ellen Lorraine the step to go forward and meet her deadline.
You can make a recommendation or make a motion that the city manager's draft budget is approved conditionally and then list out each item at that point.
Okay, that's a great way to do it, okay.
Well, maybe what we could do is try this. I move that we accept a 5% real estate tax increase that, that is based on the committee's, and based on the committee's concerns of costs in the city manager's proposed budget of today, that she continue to find efficiencies that are needed therein. And that includes the cost of the police department as a sizable percent of our budget going forward. That the, we move that the city manager continue to use a measured increase in the departments, including on new buildings, vehicles to be purchased, and authorized hires. And that we propose a final budget that has an expenditure outlay of not more than 75% of, your language was the.
Let me, can I, can I, because we're not in a full motion mode. I think what, what legal counsel is saying is, let's, consider this. Let's approve this budget with the following conditions. Just like the planning commission will say, we approve this site development, but we need you to have five times as many trees, or, you know, like whatever they do. So we're approving the budget, and here are our conditions. And let's go down through our conditions. Condition one, condition one is that you hold on the 750,000 from the transfer tax temporarily. You hold on that, reserving, so it's only 375,000 of that are moving. 375,000 balance, we're asking you to pause on that and keep that in reserves. Or, so you're not damaging. We're, we're asking you to look for efficiencies straight across. And our recommendation is that you do not spend more than 75% of this approved budget until you have come back in conversations with us and council. Because you might determine that you, well, I'm going to clarify that, okay? I'm trying to think, was there anything else in there? And that we are recommending?
Tax increase.
Well, if you, if you approve this budget, you have approved that. So you don't have to make it a condition, you don't have to make it a separate condition. But we'd also want to be recommending that we have a seat at collective bargaining. So you're approving the budget, but you're saying, and with these caveats.
Right, do we need to make sure that we indicate that we're accepting the resiliency fund? Or because we've approved the budget, we are accepting the resiliency?
We've, we've, we've approved it from what we can do. Make a motion?
Can I make?
I think we should move it though, in such a way to say that expressed concerns that we heard from the public and the discussion today is based on concerns over cost in the current, the reason why we're encouraging this revisit of what we have in front of us today is.
Carrie, I, I agree with you. I think it's important to know some of the rationale. I think the council would appreciate that, and it makes a matter of public record.
You have to go, okay, we need to get to a vote because we're losing members and we won't have a quorum. I, I think that there's a difference between a condition and a, and a value statement. So let's get approval on this, and then let's say, what are the things we want to convey in that messaging? Because that one definitely needs to be conveyed. It's not a condition of our approval, okay? It's, it is a comment going forward that we want.
I need a second.
You need a second?
Second.
Second, Larry makes second? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, okay, so note that Scott is not here, and that is not here, and Tina's not here. Okay, approved, all opposed? No, okay, okay. Motion's been accepted to move this forward. Now let's, in a sense, draft the, the email that goes with it, which is what you're just, and what do you want to share in that, Joe and Carrie particularly?
Well, I think we want to talk about the concerns raised by the public and concerns raised by the committee and discussions about the increasing cost in the budget, including human resources expenses. And as part of that, that would include vehicles and also expenses that are associated. with things like marina and beach conversions, that, you know, we want to make sure that we're mindful that of the size of the residents and the pressures that we put on the residents to fund these things, that we are careful in looking at the current budget to, you know, keep those things in the forefront.
Okay, so if I could collapse that into three areas, and then Ellen Lorraine could draft it, but we want to convey to the council in setting this budget, and we've added conditions, we also want to, in the cover letter, say, council, we are concerned about, and we have deliberated on, first of all, the right sizing of our city staff to our community, right sizing of staff and services.
Should we include, including the police?
No, I think that's, I think right sizing is like, let's do some benchmarking, do we even have the right size? But then in particular, we want to be able to really look at, and we caution to look at, the HR costs, the vehicle, the police, taking up such a high portion of the budget, that's where we, the public comment in our deliberations were. And then thirdly, we're worried about that Army Reserve facility. That's a significant piece. And so council, you need to give us some direction on that.
Yeah.
So that would handle, I think, those three kind of broad categories, leaving us room to, in future meetings, to say, how are we going to study that? Or council to say, we hear you, and we'd like you to do these things. Does that, those categories? Okay.
Conveys concern.
Conveys concern. That's really what that part is. Okay. Anybody else? Comments?
Real quick, do you also want to add to that the point that I think Joe made, that you have some of these people available?
Oh, yeah, good idea. Yeah, yeah. So we have these SMEs.
Well, we did put in the motion that there would be somebody, we would recommend the use of somebody from this for the collective bargaining.
Yes.
But similarly for other officials.
Well, we're going to need help when we start...
Yeah, yeah, I think we add that as, so we have four elements to share in our cover letter that says, we have expertise, talented expertise, and we can make them available to you as you go through your deliberations. Okay.
Can I get clarification on the 75% of spending?
Yes.
Is that when Ellen Lorraine gets to the point where she's spent 75% of the budget and has to come back to this committee?
So, yes, so it's like the obligation versus the outlay. So we're approving the obligation, but when she gets to, you know, and obviously, when she gets to like 60%, she's coming back to our finance committee saying, I'm on track, I'm not on track, here are the situations, and we get another bite at that apple to, and that could be that the efficiency study has informed us, or things that they're doing in-house. Does that answer that? So it's, so if she wants to spend all her money in HR, she has the freedom to do that. She's the CEO of the city. Now, I know she's not going to do that. But in other words, it allows her flexibility. It's a pot of money, and she's allocating as she best sees. But we're saying, we're not comfortable yet, so we'd really like you to come back and talk to the finance committee when you're hitting that marker. Okay?
Okay.
Okay? And so just to repeat that, the four areas, Joan, the first one is to convey to the city that we want to ensure that we are right sizing our city staff and expenditures for a community of our size, and I would put in caveat, and recognizing our size increases dramatically in the summer. Secondly, that we do want to share our concerns, and those are concerns we heard from the public, on the police costs, other HR costs, vehicles, that may be increasing perhaps too much for our revenue base. Thirdly, we're concerned about the pending Army Reserve, and what does that mean? We need guidance from council on when we need to start planning and looking at the financial side of that. And then lastly, we're saying, very politely, we have tremendous expertise on this community, in this committee, and we would like to make ourselves available in your deliberations so you can ask us questions. Okay? Okay. All right. I know you don't open champagne for a halfway part, but good job!
Can we push ourselves over the line one more time? Because I think this ties into the 2026 budget, and that's the parking piece.
The parking is one of the studies that we are asking council to give us guidance.
Have we moved that we recommended that?
No.
What do we need to do to make sure that goes forward?
Well, we have it on our recommended studies, that's part of our budget, so if, though it's right there.
Okay, so we're good to go on that.
Yes, we're good to go on that. And we just added, and to be too, that broad HR benefit study as well. So we're good to go on that one. Yep. And they may decide, council may say, we hear you on parking, but we're going to take parking substantively, and then we'll throw it back to you later. I don't know where they are on that. Okay. All right.
Amy?
Yes.
Amy, I have one more. We didn't address the 3% building permits, doubling up the fee.
Sorry, we approved the budget, so that was in it.
I understand.
Yeah, but your question on that, let me go back to what we did on that. Two things, just as background. One is, we asked for help from our deputy manager when Betsy Reamer and I were on the task of looking at, we were on the fee side, okay? And so we asked help from our deputy mayor to go out and talk to the major builders. Given that Lewis is mostly built out, how do we handle this? And the recommendation was, you know, because of our situation, being mostly built out, site development's mostly approved, it is actually in the individual building of a home that is where you can focus. So that was the recommendation of the building community, was look at your building permits. Then our building inspector also looked at area costs, and we were below. So that's where Betsy and I came into that number, with the caveat, which is in this out-year budget, just as Ellen Lorraine presented to us, we still have a peak of building permit activity going on, significant, but it's going to trail off to live in the world of renovations. So we don't want to get comfortable with building permits generating the type of revenue that we're going to see maybe in the next two to three years, because it's going to trail off, because then we're down to, I want to put a, you know, a sunroom on my house. I'm not building a new house, because we will be built out unless we annex more property.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We haven't moved to open.
I opened. We don't have to have a motion to open. The chair can open. Yeah. Good work, everybody. Yeah, thank you very much. Oh my God, Ellen Lorraine.
Larry, good luck with that.
It would be nice if we could just say, why don't you and Janet just go out for lunch and your day is over.
We have department managers.
You know, one of the... I think you're instinctive to say this.
I think Larry's... I need a second. My view, my view... You don't need it, right? But it's common in Lewis, so can I have a second?
Can you do what you need to do?
We make our own rules. It's our choice. Joan will second us. But it is not something, Robert Doris tells us you have...